After hours?
Uh huh.
Their next session, well, and so now you get basically it's funny, the guy that I work with.
She like.
Probably one of us. Okay, then good. The I'll maybe during break later. It made me change my password last week. I was like, I'm leaving.
Right.
But I really need my password and now it's not working.
Do you need me to get an IT person?
I don't, I'm okay as long.
Okay.
We'll get started, I don't want to play it.
Yeah, she's not here today. So. Yeah, she's on some days.
Are y'all good down this side? Are y'all good this way?
I can barely raise this.
Good morning. We are here to start our June State Board of Education meeting. I know that there's a lot of hardworking teachers, administrators, and students across the state who are happy to be on summer break. But I know for most of those, they're already starting the work for next school year to get students ready to succeed. We will start with a moment of silence this morning. Thank you. It's always great to start the meeting with guests. Today, we have some guests from Taiwan that the Secretary or Ms. Salam are going to introduce to us, but we appreciate you all being here today and look forward to hearing more about our partnership.
Good morning. Very much different being on this side of each other. Cooper Dussel on for the Department for the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I have a very distinguished honor to be with you all this morning as we present. And our director is going to join me as well as we present an MOU to extend our partnership. So we would like to introduce. So we'll first start, we'll first start with our. Oh, okay. Come on.
Good morning, everyone and the committee members. Secretary Oliva and all the participants for today's meeting. It is for me a great pleasure to be here. I am Andrea Yang, Taiwan Ministry of Education's representative in southern US. Also Director of Education Division in the Taipei Economic Cultural Office in Houston. So today I came with my boss and my colleagues here. Later on, they will also talk a little bit. And my purpose of being here is introducing to you all what the MOU is about. Actually, back in the year 2006, the state, Great State of Arkansas Council Department of Education signed the first MOU with Taiwan. So nineteen years ago, we started the partnership and friendship. And during these nineteen years, we have renewed MOU for five times. So this time is gonna be the sixth time of renewal. And from my headquarters Ministry of Education, they proposed to extend the duration from three years to five years. And gratefully, Secretary Oliva accepted. So we have now the copy of the MOU ready to sign. And talking about the content of the MOU, it's very general. So we would like to collaborate in the educational areas with the Great State of Arkansas in, for example, Taiwanese Mandarin teaching and learning. And also, we would like to recruit teaching English faculty members or talents from the Great State of Arkansas to visit Taiwan. And also, we encourage bilateral exchanges. For example, we invite educators, leaders to visit Taiwan as of the example of 2023. Later on, Dr. Jeff Coe will express and share his experience. And also connect K to sixteen institutions, schools to collaborate on cultural, technological, and science and math area of collaboration. We look forward to more projects of collaboration. And also, we would like to have you consider to incorporate our total task, Chinese Mandarin, Taiwanese Mandarin assessment to the COO of bilateral C assessment. This is briefly what the MOU is gonna be about. Thank you for your attention, thank you.
I know we love having things that our children can work towards. And so next, we're going to have our superintendent Jeff Coe. He's gonna come up here and share some of his experiences. And so we love that, I think we actually have a few pictures to show as well.
Well, good morning and thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak with you today. In November of 2023, I had the honor of serving as one of the delegates from the United States. We had about fifteen members from all across the country that went to Taiwan and spent some time there to really study the education system. This was a, this was initiated by the Ministry of Education in Taiwan. And so they are very much interested in building collaborations with, with schools throughout the United States and particularly here in Arkansas. And so I did, I did have just that honor to be there. And it was really interesting to see some of the differences that, that, that happened in Taiwan versus here, here in Arkansas. But it was also interesting to see some similarities as well. There's a lot of things that, that look very much the same. I do have some pictures here and we, we may not have time to go through everything that I have here. I did share the slideshow just to get a few pictures. So just so you know, if you're gonna fly to Taiwan, it's about a fourteen hour trip. So if, if, if you've got fourteen hours to spare, then you can hop on a plane and fly over. I will say though, flying back is a little bit shorter because the jet stream. You're able to, I guess they get into the jet stream and you move a little faster. Did have some, some delegates from the Ministry of Education that we were able to meet upon arrival. This is Taipei. Taipei is just a beautiful city. And the tall building that you see there, when that was constructed, it was the tallest building in the world. And it was, it's Taipei one oh one. And you, so it has a hundred and one stories. And you may think, well, why didn't they just stop at a hundred? And the reason they didn't stop in a hundred is, is it is built in their culture to, to exceed beyond perfect, to do the very best, to go even higher. And so instead of having one hundred floors, here we have Taipei one oh one. Interesting thing, you know, you go to any school in Arkansas and it's lunchtime, the kids go to the cafeteria and they, they pick up their meal and they, they sit in the cafeteria together and then they go to recess afterwards. Well, in the schools that we visited, we didn't see a cafeteria. There's not a place, a gathering place where the students go. Instead, the students, they have a couple of students in the classroom that go to the, to the kitchen area where they have prepared the meals, they get the meal for their class, they bring it back, set it up, and the students come through the line. Now, the students, most of the students that I saw brought their own bowls and spoons. That's what they had in their backpacks. They were ready to go with their own, everything that they needed to have their meals. So pretty interesting that that's their classroom dynamic. And you can imagine that that builds a really unique family culture when you're with those people all day long, that group of people that you're with. So it's pretty interesting. One thing else that I'll note is, we talked about the school day in Taiwan versus a school day here in the United States. So many students arrive at school between seven thirty and eight. And then for the first thirty minutes of the day, the students clean the building. They clean the classrooms, they get everything ready for learning, and they help set up as much as they can to get ready for the day. Then they have school all day long, lunch, lunch included. At the end of the day, so it's around three thirty or so, their day ends. And where, where a little bit different is, in the United States, we have great emphasis on, on a lot of after-school activities with sports and the arts and lots of programs. Since education is so very important in Taiwan, many, many students will go to what's called cram school. And that's almost like a tutoring program. It's, it's private institutions that are established. Many teachers that are, that are part of the public schools and private schools also are part of the cram schools. So many students will spend hours at cram school every day. So their day won't end until seven, eight o'clock at night. And then they go home and they do their homework from regular school. So great emphasis on education in Taiwan. We had the privilege of covering the entire country. So we started at, in the north, Taoyuan, and went to, to Sinshu and made our way all the way down. Tainan and Kaohsiung was the, was the furthest south we went. And so the country, just, I don't know, you all, some of you may know this. The country is about a third of the size of Arkansas. So it's not a huge country. And if I ask you, what is the population of Arkansas? Who knows the population of Arkansas? Three million. The population of Taiwan is twenty-three million. See, and you just thought that traffic was bad in Little Rock. So it, it is, it's, it's really a unique place. Not a lot of homes with huge yards unless you live out really far. Lot of population in cities. So it's a, it's a really interesting country. And the way that you get places so fast is you ride this high-speed rail. This, this is what they have from, from north all the way to the south of the country. Goes about two hundred and seventeen miles an hour. And I can attest to the fact that you really don't feel the takeoff or the stop because it's a slow, slow trend up and down. So just a lot of cultural things that we were able to experience. It was really, really cool. This is the Ministry of Education, as well as all of the delegates had a dinner together at the end. It was just such a privilege to be able to go. If you wondered what the meals looks like, that's in this slide too. So just a few other pictures. I didn't know we had that one in there. So that's, that's in there as well. So bubble milk, if, or bubble tea, if you drink bubble tea, that actually came from Taiwan. Mochi, if you know what mochi is, is a dessert. It's Taiwan, Taiwan-based. There's so many other things. Pineapple cake, pineapple cake, Taiwan as well. So lots of great things that are from Taiwan. Very, very beautiful country. I always tell people that, you know, if you, if you need to have a backup country, now I don't know if you, if we need to have a backup country or not. You probably won't know until you need a backup country. But if you need a backup country, Taiwan is such a beautiful place and such a welcoming environment for Americans. You know, it's one of our strongest allies and they're true friends to the American people. And they were very courteous to us as a delegation and we could not have enjoyed it more. It was such a great experience. And so encourage all of you, if you have a chance to, to go. Any of this board, if you ever have a chance to go, I would encourage you to do so. But I do believe that this partnership is, is, is very important for our state as well as Taiwan. They have a, a, a goal right now in Taiwan to be bilingual by 2030. And so all of their kids, because you're probably thinking, well, how, how was I able to go? I don't speak Mandarin. And that's true. Almost everyone in Taiwan speaks English. They can speak English. And the children are learning English in their classrooms. And so they have this very ambitious goal of 2030. And that's why they want to have American teachers spend time, even in the summer or whenever, going over to teach English. And we, we met several Americans that were in Taiwan teaching English just for a short stay. So I, I do think that it's worthy. Taiwan continues to excel academically. They're one of the highest performing countries in the world, always in the top five. And it is evident, you can see why that is when you see the education taking place in the country. So it was truly an honor. I want to thank everyone that gave me the opportunity to, to go. And I, it, it was a privilege and I can't wait to get another chance to go back. Thank you.
Guys, I was so excited for, for us to start in on this. I forgot to recognize our honored guest as well. So accompanying Director of Education, which is Andrea Yang. She's also accompanied by the Director General, Yvonne Shao. We have our console, Josh Lynn, and then the Coordinator of Educational Affairs, Alyssa Chung. And we're very excited to have them today. And I believe we have some remarks by Mr. Shane Broadway.
I know y'all have a lengthy agenda. Good morning. I'm Shane Broadway, Vice President, University Relations at the ASU System. But in terms of my history with the MOU that you're gonna sign today, it dates back to actually when I was Speaker of the House. To that, back in, back to two thousand, two thousand and one. I was actually, as Dr. Jeff Coe has the great fortune of going to Taiwan, I was actually supposed to go to Taiwan, but unfortunately nine eleven happened, two weeks before we were supposed to leave. And so I never had the opportunity to go yet. But so we're working on that. But I've had the great fortune of my time in the legislature and then as Director of the, now the Division of Higher Education, to sign one of the MOUs in terms of our relationship with our friends from Taiwan. And so a long relationship that we've had, a very great relationship. And I was the one, Dr. Jeff Coe, who reached out to Dr. Hernandez, now will be Dr. Duncan, to encourage a group of superintendents to go to Taiwan. And so I'm glad that you took advantage of it. Who knew that two boys that grew up in Celine County would be involved in Taiwan? Couldn't have, couldn't have scripted that one. So, but we at, at Arkansas State University are very proud of our relationship. They have provided a Mandarin Chinese teacher for us in exchange. We provide the housing and the stipend. And so it's been a great benefit for our students to be able to learn a language that is very important in the global economy right now. And so we're very, very fortunate to have the relationship and the friendship. And I appreciate the state and governor and all of you for continuing the relationship with such a friendly adversary and our friends in Taiwan. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Secretary and Board. Appreciate all you do.
I'll just say a few things and then we'll sign, officially sign the memorandum of understanding. But thank you for the partnership and Dr. Jeff Coe. I don't know if anybody mentioned, but he's the Superintendent Van Buren. So we appreciate you coming down and sharing why this is a big deal and it's important in the partnership with Arkansas State University. I know it's a win for our students and I'll, I'll let the board know that if, if we get another delegation, which they want to do to go visit and learn more about it, maybe we can have a volunteer from the board would like to participate and represent. So we'll, we'll start taking, we'll, we'll start taking those nominations. We can make that happen.
Sure. Director, as the board is coming down, would you like to say a few remarks?
Your Honors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. It's really amazing and also honoring to witness the signature of the MOU, which stresses and also showed the partnership, which stressed all the way back to 2006. In Mandarin, we have a saying that the best return for a year is to grow rice, which you have plenty and the best in Arkansas. And the best return for ten years is to grow trees. And the best return for a hundred year is to educate people. And we all understand the importance of education. And that's the reason we want to strengthen the cooperation in this field. And from Dr. Jeff Coe and from his sharing, we can know that Taiwan and America, we have so much in common, but we also have some differences. And that makes us want to do exchanges, to see the difference in for sharing. And thank you so much for your continued support and signing of the MOU. Thank you so much.
And actually, Secretary, I believe there's a surprise for you. I, I know.
I just prepared a token of gift. It's a set of teapot. As you can see, Taiwan is famous for its tea. And the teapot, the shape is a sky lantern, which means good luck and healthy. I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we can get the whole board and all of the delegation to come down for one quick picture as well?
I believe that would be beautiful.
Great, that was awesome. It's neat to, it was neat to see those pictures and hear about Dr. Jeff Coe's experiences and think about hopefully other teachers and, and students and administrators that could have those opportunities. Because I think when we see the world, we just gain so much wisdom and perspective that can, should be shared with our students. With that, I don't believe there are any changes to the agenda. So we will get started with our action agenda. Item number one, we have Tanya Williams up here for the Arkansas Better Chance Program.
Thank you. Get right to business after that lovely introduction to the morning. I am here, I'm gonna take you guys back to March. We talked about Arkansas Better Chance allocations and you all made approvals for the bulk of the programs back in March. We used a process that I described to you and I just want to describe it again. We worked with the local leads. You'll remember that's part of the Learns Act that we work with local leads, that we get those set up across the state, so we have twenty-six. And we use data from the local leads that we have in our state covering all the counties. They did a child count back in October of last year. And then in December followed up with a coordinated funding request. So in March, the allocations that I brought to you, because we have, there aren't any new funds, but we had taken action against programs that were not at full enrollment. So we had several hundred slots that we reallocated using that data. So since March, unfortunately, we've had some programs that have notified us that they are relinquishing voluntarily the slots that they currently have. There's a variety of reasons for that. Some is restructuring. One school district is closing some elementary buildings. So there are many reasons. We are certainly very saddened by that. But we use the same process to make these recommendations to you today. So I'm gonna start with that. And we have a few slides, I think, if I can get it, hang on, I'll go back. This is the number of center-based slots with the amount per child and then the home visiting slots. And I know we've talked about home visiting. None of the reallocations. We have really converted all of those to center-based, any that were turned in. So these are the numbers and the amount. that were turned in. So these are the numbers and the amount of funding. This is just a breakdown, a summary of what has happened, the action items that have happened. There were three programs that we brought to you in March that were going to be new programs. Two were family childcare homes. One was a school district. All three of them declined, sadly. One thing that we did differently this time is we called all of the programs that had requested to make sure they wanted to take these before I brought these today. The reason that those were declined, at least for one of them, is that in the school district, they are opening up a paying classroom, which is very exciting, too. That's not always done in school districts. So they just had a little different direction that they were going to go in. But this is just a summary at the top of what has been converted or reallocated. We do have a couple of co-op changes, and Dawson Co-op is relinquishing 80 of their slots to Benton School District at the request of the school district to operate their own program. That's a mutual agreement. And then Sheridan is moving slots to Dawson to administer on their behalf. So just a few little nuanced changes there. Doesn't change the number of children. But this is just a breakdown of that and what's been reallocated. And then this is just a different visual to look at that, the different groups. So DeQueen Mina, how many slots they had and how many we're adding in this request. So I will note that we do have some programs that are going to do infant toddler, which is allowable in Arkansas Better Chance. So just point that out, that DeQueen Mina is going to be serving some infants and toddlers across, I think, four of their counties in their respective service area. And we, these are programs that requested slots. They're programs where the data has, they're only serving zero to 40% of their population. And that's the reason we're asking for these to be reallocated to these programs. But you can kind of look at that. Again, these were either relinquished, and it shows the new number for Fort Smith, who is relinquishing 100 slots. And then they did convert some to, this is one place where there was some home visiting. They're converting some of their center-based to home visiting. It's the only place where I've seen a change with center to home visiting this year. And then, and this is the rest. This is just across all the different programs and the number of slots. And the number they will have at the bottom is what their total will be. And I'll stop there. If you all have questions about this part of it. Again, we're just real, it's about 179 slots that were relinquished or turned back that we're reallocating.
Board members to my left, questions? To my right, questions?
Not at all.
No, I promise it is really dumb. Can you remind me of the distinction between center and home-based? I mean, are these people that have signed up through the state and?
Yes. Yeah, so in, in the law for Arkansas Better Chance, there are two options. You can do center-based programming, which would be a traditional classroom-style setting, or you can deliver it through home visiting. And that's a home visitor who goes into the home and works with the family and delivers either a home instruction program for preschool youngsters curriculum, or parents as teachers. They're both nationally-recognized curriculums.
And are we just seeing a downward trend?
We are seeing a downward trend, Ms. Wood. We've seen that really over the last 20 years. It has continued, because families need, families are working and need center-based care, generally speaking.
I have a question on the co-ops. When they are administering the programs, are those facilities at the co-ops, or are they typically in the district and the co-op is running it?
Typically in the school district, and the co-op is operating it for the school.
What, why are some districts deciding to do that in-house versus co-op? Is that?
You know, we don't always get down in the weeds of those details, but what I can tell you, I usually do ask questions about it. I think the Benton situation is the school superintendent who is going to that district, who will be new, has operated early childhood in his previous districts and wants to have manage it himself. And we see that a lot in districts where they may want to. And then consequently, we also see where some districts say, I don't want to administer. The co-op administers a pretty large program, and we'd just like for them to handle that, so that they're not having to get into that early childhood space. So I, I think it's just a difference for, in leadership, possibly, chairman.
And then when you have this, you said, we're starting to see more of the birth to three. Is there any funding differences given to the, okay, it's all the same right now?
Yes, it is the same. The 5,105 is what they get for a child, whether it's a child that's an infant or a preschool-aged child.
Are there ability, I know in, in school districts specifically, school districts might open up classrooms for students who pay. Is there any part where districts will receive both funding and, you know, require some additional pay for a student? Or students that are coming can only receive state funding?
So they could blend in a classroom, students who pay with students who receive ABC funding. I see that. But they wouldn't charge the ABC. That is actually in the rule.
If you're receiving ABC funding, this is the only funding you get for that child.
For the school day portion of that day. That is in the rule that they can't charge for items that would be considered part of that day. If the child went past the school day, like if they go to after-hours care, they could charge them for after-hours care beyond the school day. Does that help?
Is there, are you going to talk about the summer awards?
Yes, that's separate. I just wanted to get this one out of the way first. And then secondly, we have a request for summer for children whose parents are working and need extended care beyond the school year. And I can go ahead and jump into that if you guys want me to.
Okay. Ms. Keener, did you have a comment?
Well, do you, are these two separate motions, or do you want to, or are they, is it all the same, I guess, because it's all ABC?
We do have two separate action items.
Yes.
Should we wrap the first one up first, first for these renewal grants, and then the second one? Looks like it's the summer services.
And y'all know I have a comment. So, so much. First of all, compliments to Ms. Williams and Ms. Dishman and Ms. Jeffries, everybody in her team for digging into the why. As, I've spoken about ABC funding as a partial funding. It is a match where 60/40, so the state will give 60%, but you have to put in the other 40. And we're learning that it's not enough. And districts often are the ones who can take advantage of this, given their built-in structure. They already have sort of a oversight of the administration. They've got the buildings. They've got the lights turned on. So that 40% match is pretty, is fairly easy, or easier, I should say. So it is troublesome when districts are saying, we don't want a part of this. So we are going to dig in this, in the subcommittee. We're going to look into what, what they could, what they, what could have changed their minds. What did they need from us that we, that this current system didn't provide? Because as we know, third grade reading levels are of utmost concern right now. And when districts are asking, what can we do? My response is always, don't wait till kindergarten. Get these kids at their brain-building years aligned kindergarten with those early childhood. You'll know your kids before they come to you. You'll understand them. It's going to be a part of the community. So I appreciate all the work. I'm excited about the coordinated funding efforts and seeing this play out. And we will dig into the why, and maybe later on, I'll ask you to look at ABC in a different way. And we'll do what we can to meet the needs of these providers. Thank you.
If I could, Ms. Keener, I might, I might, I'm putting you in a spot. Can you talk a little bit more about what that matches, when you say 60/40? Because I think people think it's dollar-per-dollar match. But what, what does it really look like for a school district to contribute to make maybe some of that in-kind contribution? I think that might help with clarification.
I think, and I think that's where my question was coming from.
Yeah.
No, understanding of the pay structure.
Interesting, because it is understood that 5,000 and some change is not nearly enough to cover care for a child, especially one with such low ratios, infant, toddler, early childhood for the year. So it is understood that when you are given this money, you'll have to make up the difference, with the understanding being it's probably going to be about 40% of what the total cost would be. Now, unfortunately, the cost of care is often higher than what is funded for care. And so, you know, we all need more money. But, but when you're looking at lower ratios, consider that. How many adults you have to hire? How many salaries and sick days and substitutes when you might only have four children in a classroom versus in kindergarten where you've got 20 or larger, in larger rooms? So I, does that clarify the other thing? And I'll let you fill it in, because there is some interesting ways that school districts.
Yeah, let me talk a little bit about the match itself. So we, we see where they may match with a teacher. They pay the teacher's salary out of maybe like Title I funds or something that would be allowable, or other SFA funds, or something like that. Space could be one. That, that's often, you know, compared to a community-based provider who may be renting or purchasing space, the school district sometimes inherently has space, but their space could be counted as in-kind match. So it, it isn't always a dollar-for-dollar match. It can be, you know, materials, training, things like that, that the school district and even private providers can use. It just can be more challenging, I think, on the community-based side.
Well, and we know that more and more school districts are facing lower enrollments. They have empty classrooms. What a way to solve that problem and develop the kids that you're going to later have in your first and third-grade classrooms. So, you know, if, I believe every superintendent should be banging on the door, go and give me some of these kids. So when, when they're not, we'll dig in and see what more they need. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Board members, other questions?
Can you talk to us about the process of a foster child or a displaced child, and how long that takes to be served? And how, do they come through you, or just talk to us about that?
No, that's a great question, because we try to have coverage for that, you know. And, and probably our relationship when we were at DHS made us really hyper-aware of this. But children in foster care can happen overnight, as you may all be aware of. And so when that happens in a community, a parent who's a foster parent may need early care and education. They're working parents, too. And so we want to make available, and so the whole purpose of us putting that language in is to get those children in to pre-k, which is a great option for them, to get that high-quality early childhood experience immediately or as quickly as possible. And that's why we have that language in, board member. It is just to get those children in as soon as that program notifies us, hey, we have a foster family, we're going to approve that that child can be served. It might even go over their threshold of 20. But we want to get them in. And then if they lose a child they wouldn't replace and have 21 pass that. But it is to get that child who really needs high-quality early care and education, based on a lot of research around trauma, and just making sure they have stability and continuity. So that's the reason we have it there.
Board members, other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll leave the floor open for a motion here. This is on action item one, which is the renewal grants.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the update to the Arkansas Better Chance Program renewal grants for the 25-26 program year.
There's a motion by Ms. Keener. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Hunter. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now we have item two, the remaining funds.
Yes. So I will talk, as you may remember, I also, when I spoke to you in March, talked about adjustments that we had made to programs who were not at full enrollment. So we have some remaining, or projected remaining budget savings from that. We did the project, projection based on also that our PD or contractors would bill out there. So this is just what we project will be remaining. But during the summer, we assess programs and ask if there are any families that are going to need care. We have about almost 3,000 children whose families are continuing to work who need summer care beyond the school year. When I first started over 20 years ago, we used ABC remaining funds. Coming forward in time, we used some of our federal childcare funds. But because we have a waitlist on the federal childcare side now, we can only serve those children that are already in, like maybe they have before and after care for ABC. So we have those, we have CCDF or childcare development slots that can pay for those children. But we do have children in ABC. And so we're just requesting that we use this much of this year's remaining budget. And then we're asking to use, from some contract reductions that we talked to you about, I think in April, to use about half a million. This 852 would really help us cover June, and the 500 or half a million will help us cover July, just to get us through the summer for these children that are going to need extended care for their families to work. So we have a list of about 82 programs that are continuing. Many of those are community-based. We do have some school districts, but a lot of our community-based providers continue to serve children that do ABC, if the families need that extended care.
Board members, questions to my left. Ms. Hunter?
Okay, so whenever I read here on our agenda about the 500,000, you know, it mentions here that it's from the 25-26 budget.
So that would be for starting July 1. So summer would go, you know, just thinking about the remaining funds for June, really. And then July 1, we could use some of the savings from our reductions in contracts to continue to serve those children in July. Some of the programs will end at the end of July. I think summer going, maybe into that first week of August. But most of them don't go right up to the school year. But some of our community-based providers will go right up to the start of the school year.
Thank you for reminding me when the school year starts.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Well, my compliments that we've, that this money was found, because blending and braiding and doing all the things with funds, getting innovative is what you have to do when there's not enough. So I appreciate this. These kids are in good hands because of you.
Other board members' questions? I did notice that the amounts are pretty small for, per center. Is there restricted uses for these funds?
For the summer. It is really just for them to carry, you know, that child through those summer months. And think about, it's a much smaller amount in the summer, because it's a fewer, you know, fewer days. But we do it based on their number of projected days. Some of them may operate, you know, 30 to 45 days. Some may go the full 60 days. So it's, it's a little, it's based on that. So it's their per-daily, you know, calculation.
That makes sense, why there's variation between them, too. Has there ever been a, a sort of a study or an audit done of, you know, these are families that are already connected to programs that are already being done in the summer? But I can imagine if you polled or looked at families across the state whose programs aren't going on in the summer, they too need that child care. Do we have any better understanding of how many families truly do want, would use childcare like that over the summer from zero to five?
I would say we could start with the waitlist that we currently have. I mean, that's the.
So you do have waitlist data?
We do have waitlist.
Is that per center?
It's actually just statewide. You know, so we have several hundred, and that waitlist will continue to build for childcare assistance. Head Start's another example where it may end in the summer. And I, I think those, some of those families, I will tell you that even in ABC, if you think about, we serve almost 20,000 children in center-based, but only 3,000 are needing summer. A lot of families want, you know, a little less formal for them, especially if they're transitioning to kindergarten or kindergarten this year. They want to have a less formal situation for their child. But this is how many, you know, needed it out of the 20,000. So it starts to get a little smaller. So I don't want to say everybody needs it. But we do know that the waitlist is a predictor of how many families are requesting childcare.
Do you, if you're on the waitlist, does that mean your centers, I mean, it might be that your center just isn't open in the summer?
No.
And so you're not on the waitlist, but you still need care? Yeah.
The waitlist is because we have no funding to serve them.
Okay.
The, the center could serve them, but that we have no funding to serve them.
Okay. Board members, any further questions? We will have the floor open for a motion on the ABC remaining funds allocations.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the reallocation, am I on the right one? Yes, the reallocation of Arkansas Better Chance remaining funds for 24-25 for the summer services.
There's a motion by Ms. Keener. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Rollins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
I just want to point out, I know the finance people may be in the room, but I need to make sure 25-26 is covered, because they will come after me if I don't have approval from the board, so.
And just the agenda is incorrect, or is it the document itself?
Well, I think we said 24-25, the remaining funds.
So I read off the agenda.
No, it's, it's okay. I just want to make sure they know we're good to cover. And I don't get myself in trouble.
Do we need to amend that, or is that? I'm, I read the year 24-25, as it states in the agenda, but the funds are from 24-25 to cover the 25-26.
Yeah, we have two years. We're talking about the remaining for 24-25, and then using 25-26. I just want to make sure.
Because the fiscal year is July 1.
That it's clear.
I say just, let's restate that motion for clarification, so that.
Perfect. So I move that we approve the reallocation of Arkansas Better Chance remaining funds.
See, I think it's covered, I thought it was covered in the first one that we, because we were talking about the twenty-five, twenty-six program year, and we have both the final proposal and then the summer services for July.
In the first one, yeah.
If we're good, I'm good, I just want-
So that's, because there's, there's two different documents.
I think we're covered.
Okay. And we have that unwritten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members, so much.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, we have a series of rules. Ms. Smith to present to us. These first rules will be for, out for public comment.
Good morning, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner. All right, we're going to start seeing administrative rules every month coming before the board. Today, I'm going to show you some rules that are brand-new, they're going out for public comment. And then I'm going to show you some rules that you saw before the legislative session that kind of just got held up because session was going on, but we need to bring them back up and get them, get them through. So reminding you of the process. First, we release for comment, public comment by the State Board. They go out for a comment period for thirty days and a notice. Then it comes back to this board for final approval. And then it goes to be reviewed by ALC. If at any time during the public comment period, there is a change to the rule that is considered substantive, it then goes back out again for public comment and goes through that process again. All right? So, new rules that are coming before you today. The first one is rules governing maternity leave. This is the first time this board has seen these rules. So this is asking for a release to go out for public comment and to come back. During the last legislative session, we saw two pieces of legislation that actually expand, expanded Arkansas Lawrence. One, it guarantees that every teacher now has twelve-week maternity leave or public educator or working in a public school district. So every school district before, they were getting to choose whether or not they did it. Now it's, it's a requirement. Every school district will participate. It also does a reimbursement for a hundred percent of the incurred cost during maternity leave. So that's very clear now what, what the expectation is. It does allow leave to be extended, the maternity leave to be extended for holidays within an academic school year. So if a Christmas break, Thanksgiving break, would not count against the teacher's maternity leave time, and that would be extended. That was part of the piece of the legislation. So these are going out for their first public comment period. There is going to be a lot of guidance provided with these, once everything kind of gets nailed down, and some examples to make sure everyone is really clear on what counts and what doesn't count. They did it by the number of days, if you read the rules, it'll talk about eighty-three, eighty-four days, which is the number of days in a twelve-week period. So I'm going to pause there and see if there's any questions.
Was maternity to also include paternity leave?
No.
Board members' questions?
This does still include, if you are adopting, if you have a foster child that's under the age of one. So, I mean, there's those components that are in there, too. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the maternity leave to release for public comment, instead of batching them like we've done sometimes. I'm just going to do one at a time today.
Okay, so unless there's any questions, there's a, the floor will be open for a motion to approve the rules governing maternity leave cost sharing for public comment.
I'm sorry, I don't hear, I do have a question. Please, so on page three of the document, it, it says, "For purposes of this part, an employee who has been disciplined for any leave abuse during the twelve-month period prior to staff member's request."
So that was in legislation?
Okay, so it's just as vague as that, has been disciplined?
Yes.
Okay.
And so in some of the guidance pieces, that's where we were trying to fill in, like, what is the example of that documentation or what would be needed? And that may be an area where we receive public comment on clarifications are needed.
Thank you.
Is this for the mother only?
Yes, ma'am.
Further questions, board members? Then we'll have the floor open for a motion.
I make the motion that we release for public comment the rules governing maternity leave.
There's a motion by Ms. Rollins, a second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. So again, these will come back to you at some point. All right, the second one, rules governing public school choice. We have three different acts that amended legislation around public school choice. We also have in our state several different avenues for public school choice. So these rules get very lengthy and at times confusing. One of the things that you'll see with legislation changes was it continues to empower parents regarding choice. It opened up intra-district school choice. So if you're in a large district that has more than one school, it now allows parents to choose to go to another school within their resident district. So this has resident district transfers or choice and also out-of-school district choices. It extended the deadline to June first, prior it was May first. And it established the capacity definition at ninety-five percent for enrollment for schools. So if they have, they can deny a student if they're at ninety-five percent capacity based on school classroom size rules.
Is that ninety-five percent new? Was it ninety before, or has it always been ninety-five?
What was it before?
Morning, Courtney Solis Ford. Previously, it was ninety percent for school choice and ninety-five percent for opportunity. And so now they've changed it so that they're consistent and it's ninety-five for both.
Thank you. Is there any appeal beyond the ninety-five? What was the question? Is there any appeal beyond that ninety-five percent?
So the, the law does still allow a denial to be appealed to you all. You can't overturn the decision if there was, it's because of a timeline. But if you feel that it's in the best interest to make the district exceed that ninety-five percent, then yes, that appeal is still allowed.
Board members, questions? Ms. Rollins?
I know inner-school transfers gets complicated with athletics. Does this clarify any of that?
So we don't address athletics in these rules, other than to say that if a student wants to be eligible, that they have to complete the AAA required form. There was a law passed that addresses specific timelines that if they don't enroll in the new school district by, I believe it's July one, in their tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade year, that they have to sit out a year. But because that's governed under a different law and is not specific to school choice, we didn't include it in these rules.
In fact, the Senate explicitly said that you are not to ask about, what is it, academic achievement, athletic or extracurricular ability, English proficiency level. There are some things that are written to disregard.
Right, right, and it also says in there, for example, like, that they can't discriminate against a student or preclude them from participating in those activities because of their school choice status. And while we didn't want to put the date requirement in there is to create, to avoid creating that confusion. Because that, that is not specific to school choice, it does affect school choice students. But the, the fact of them being school choice or achievement level status, none of that should be taken into consideration.
I have one more question. And so this is, so I understand about the intra-district transfers. So does that also apply to students who are choicing in? I mean, do they then get to choose their school?
They can request that, of course, it's still the same as it was before. Whereas if the district says we don't have room at that school, they can deny it. That would then enable the, the parent and student to say, well, what about this other school? So it is a choice request, but it does not mean that they necessarily will get that school.
Following along that, I was, I did not look at this last night. If it is an in-district choice school, they don't have the appeal to the State Board, do they?
Yes, it's, it's all included in their name.
It still is, so even if you're a resident in this district and I just want to choose another elementary school, if-
If the district denies it, then they could appeal that to you all.
Do they appeal that first to their local board? Does the local board play any role in this?
No, because it, it is essentially the board that's making those decisions. Many boards delegate that to their superintendent to make the decision. But when the superintendent decides, he's acting on behalf of the board. So you would be reviewing the board's decision.
Okay.
Board members, further questions?
Yeah, that will get interesting, are there, I mean, I assume the procedures will be the same for what we've done longstanding for intra-district, but-
Yes, it'll be the same procedures.
And those, is there a timeline as to when that has to be done by?
There is, and it should be in the rule.
Is it January one that they have to apply by still?
Yeah, so it's, well, they can't apply before January one, but they have to apply by June one.
So like between January and June, that's their timeframe?
Correct.
That used to be May, correct?
That's correct, it switched from May one to June one to give parents that additional time. And there is a- All right, here it is, yeah. They have ten days excluding weekends and holidays after receiving notice to file their appeal with the division. So we would expect probably, I mean, the, the school district has to notify them of their decision within fifteen days of the application. So we could see appeals throughout the entire spring. But since they have until June one, I would anticipate that the most of them that we see would be in June and/or July.
So we're going to go back to what we were doing a couple of years ago where July was a terrible meeting?
Possible, if we see a lot of denials, that we could end up with a lot of hearings, yes.
Larger districts, I imagine, will be tricky. Have you all received feedback yet from some of the larger districts on how they expect to handle this?
No, I have not.
I think local school districts right now are in the same boat we're in right now, putting out the rules. I expect we're going to get a lot of public comment on these rules. That will help us decide what kind of guidance we need to be putting out, what kind of charts or graphs, or like, how does this look? The reality right now is, we are in a time of choice. We are in a time of parents being able to choose and pick where their child goes to school, whether that's with a private school, charter school, or a public school. And we are shifting in our state the mindset of even our public schools and how that operates. And so this is, there's going to be a learning curve around this, right? And it's probably bumpy here in the beginning, but I feel like this will probably smooth out, especially as local districts are creating local policies that make more sense for them. You know, depending on, other, other states have open intra-district policies right now. So there are going to be people looking at other states and say, how do you do it over there? Our state is a very small state in terms of the number of schools within most of our districts. So you're really talking only about a handful of districts that have multiple schools. Most districts only have one high school. You'll have some that have two or three, but other than that, it's, it's a pretty small. It gets into your elementary schools is where you have the larger number, right? So there's going to be some policy pieces there, and there's going to be times for, this is time for our partners, Dr. Duncan and AAEA, to pull together their folks to say, how are you doing this in your district? So there'll be some opportunity there. Today, this is just a release to go out, begin receiving the lots of comments I believe we're going to receive.
Forgive me, I didn't read it in detail, but the, I didn't see, remember seeing this, but the, I know at least when I was in Little Arkansas District back in the nineteen hundreds, they had what was called a TNT, which is a transfer no transportation. So within the district, they already allowed that choice, but you were giving up the transportation. Tell me about that here where transportation, sorry, where transportation falls. Because I think that's always a big topic.
Yeah, so it kind of depends. If you are applying under opportunity school choice, the law still provides that the district has to provide transportation up to a cost maximum of four hundred dollars. However, and you can do inter or intra-district under opportunity or public school choice. If you're under public school choice, under the law, there is no requirement that the district provide transportation. However, if you are doing intra-district and your district has a policy whereas you provide transportation to students, and this is where I think districts are going to have to be very careful and work with their policy drafter to make sure you can't discriminate against one of those students because of school choice. And so the law doesn't require you to provide transportation, but if you provide transportation to your other students, you're going to have to be very careful in not discriminating against a school choice student because of their use of school choice. And so you may end up having to provide transportation. Going to Stacy's point, I think this is where there's situations where districts are going to have to be very creative and really look at some of their existing bus routes and policies. And things may not look the way that they did before. There may be some riding a bus from home to one school and then that school to another school. I think this is just a, kind of a whole new area that we're going to have to navigate and figure out how it works best.
Well, and I think that answers another question I had about including residential address in the list of things that could not be discriminated against. So that makes sense now, thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a question. Going back to the, the comments about the, the culture is very pro-student, pro-choice. And, and I really believe that the board has demonstrated a, a favoring students and parents' choices. And, and that's been going on for several years. I think that there, there was a real shift maybe ten years ago or so that started with regard to being critical of districts that denied students the opportunity to go wherever. Does the law, so my question is, does the law authorize us to put in the rules punitive measures when choice applications are denied and overturned by this board so that districts would be disincentivized to deny just out of a, well, let's just deny it and see what happens? Because it, you know, talking about, you know, the references to, you know, July meetings are going to be bad, we're going to have lots of denial appeals and all this and that. Can, can we, can we put in the rules that, you know, if a, if a family or a student is represented by an attorney, that those attorney fees would have to be paid by the, if, if the denial is overturned? Is, is that a possibility?
We can look into that further. That's nothing that is explicitly stated in the law, yes or no. I will say, though, that I, I believe in my experience, the denials that we have seen from districts has always been based on capacity. There's been an occasional few that, where maybe something else was considered, and I think those are different situations. But when a district is, is lawfully denying it based on capacity, your authority to overturn that doesn't mean that they necessarily did anything wrong or that would deserve punitive action. So certainly in those cases, I don't feel like punitive action would be necessary or even appropriate. However, in those cases where there might be a, a different example of denial based on disability, that's something that we can look at. But also, as you know, that is a case of discrimination where that, that parent and attorney could pursue that avenue in, in a different avenue in district court in, for lawful discrimination. But we can look at that if you like.
Yeah, fair enough, but that, too, is complicated and just another process that a parent has to go through to recover that. Just anything we can do to just get the message to districts that if kids want to come to your school or want to leave your school, the answer, there should be a heavy burden to say no. That's, that's what I think the message often is from this board. Whatever we can do to support that.
If I could add a comment, so I, this is like the number one question I get asked up in Bentonville, Rogers, Springdale, and Fayetteville, because that's our, my home district. Every school is full. And so I have a hard time when they're like, but it's school choice. But yet, there's never going to be a choice because all the schools are full at a hundred percent and over that all of the time. So that's why I'm like, I'm going to be staring at these July people that are saying, I wanted to go to that school, or we went to that school and we moved, but we want to stay because it's our last year of elementary school. And then you've got somebody else, like, I have a great example from last year. People were moving between Bentonville High and Bentonville West. It was his senior year, he played for Bentonville baseball the whole time. And I don't remember how it, she's like, can I petition to stay at Bentonville? And I'm like, I, I don't, I mean, there's district transfers, but I don't know about that. So that's just what I foresee happening is there's all these one-offs of, it's my last, kid's last year, we just moved here, X, Y, Z, just-
Well, and in the opposite sense, we've seen schools deny a student leaving their school district because their numbers are going down, and they're like, we can't lose another kid. But if people are, you know, scraping to get out, there's another issue, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and that cap on a district being able to- Yeah, and, and that cap on a district being able to deny it because they're losing students, that was taken out. So the, the losing district, uh, and has no legal reason to say no. It would only be if the receiving district now is full. And I will say, I think something we're working on and looking at to, to help address that is our student-teacher ratios and max, max room, max capacity for classrooms. Um, because many times it's, well, by adding one student to this class, we're gonna have to hire another teacher to stay within our ratios. If we can provide some flexibility on that in our rules, then maybe they could and would allow that one student to stay if it didn't cause them to have to, um, hire another teacher or come to the board and ask for a waiver of class-sized rules. Um, so hopefully we can help alleviate and address some of those issues on our end so that we're not putting districts in that position of, of having to tell that one student no.
Because we're not talking about funding between districts when we're talking about changing schools, because it's all in the same pot.
Right, it, it'll still be going to the same district.
Board members, to my right, any questions, additional comments?
I'm ready to make the motion. I'd like to move that we release the public school choice rules for public comment.
There's a motion by Dr. Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Wood. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have, do we have three sets of rules for final approval?
Yes. Okay, this one is the rules governing child sexual abuse and human trafficking. This is one you've seen recently. This was a change regarding the human trafficking rules require school, school districts to implement a child sexual abuse and human trafficking prevention program, provide training to teacher, teachers, and prevent school districts from providing instructions on certain topics before fifth grade. Um, this was released for public comments recently. There were no public comments, so there are no changes, um, to these rules. Um, most everything in these rules is pretty identical to the law. So I would ask for a motion to approve these for ALC.
Board members, to my right, questions or comments? To my left, questions or comments? And I, I did note that there were no comments made in the public comment process.
I'll make a motion to release to the ALC.
There's a motion, Ms. Woods, to approve the rules and release to ALC the rules governing child sexual abuse and human trafficking prevention.
I'll second.
A, a second by Mr. Bragg. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next set of rules are what we would consider, or called first connections or Part C rules. These were actually presented to the board by Ms. Keener back in November seventh, twenty twenty-four. Um, the changes in these rules really were about moving from the Department of Human Services over to the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education, right? So those were the biggest changes. Um, in terms of timeline and why it's taken so long, they were pretty hefty for one. Um, other early childhood rules were taking, um, preference of trying to get those through. And then in terms of just priority of all the rules going, this was one that was kind of a, a low-hanging fruit. Um, once it got to that part where it was approved to go out and the process started, we changed how they have to be, the format that they have to be put in, which is the CAR format. So we've had to go back and put these rules in the CAR format that you currently see now. That's why it looks like the whole rule is new when it's not, all right? But that's, that's why you see that formatting change. Um, so this, the changes you see reflected are really about changing between the Department of Human Services over to the Division. Um, and then just the lagging where we had the legislative session, and so they've just kind of sat there. And so now we're bringing them back up to you. They're in the correct format, um, and they're ready to be approved for, um, to go over to ALC.
Okay, that makes sense, because I was shocked that if it was all a new rule, that there was no public comments received. So it's not all new.
That was not the case. In fact, when it went out for public comment, it was even in the, I believe, in the old format. Um, and then, so once it was approved and we were in that lagging time, they were like, wait, we've changed our format. You've gotta go back and reformat it.
Okay.
And so that's what we've done.
Appears red.
Yes, yes.
Not all new words.
Yes.
Board members, questions to my right? To my left, questions?
I will say that, Secretary Oliva would say, quit talking if you think they're about to vote. I will say that I do believe there are, there are, um, like, he hasn't given me a look yet, but I was feeling that his head was gonna come up, right? So keep your head down, and I'll, I'll say what I say. I do feel like there, there is gonna be a need for additional changes to these rules at some point. This is still, um, new to our division, right? And that we are learning about how the program has been administered in the past. Um, there are definitely areas that we've identified that we believe need to be addressed or changed or improvements made. However, we need to get some rules on the books. DHS has rescinded their rules, so we need to get the Part C rules back where they need to be. Um, and then we're gonna continue to have conversations about these rules and things and changes that we think might need to occur to make this a better program.
We're building a house. Licensing is the foundation.
That's right. That's, thank you, Ms. Keener. Thank you. So I would ask for, um, a good vote.
Well, in, in that, I do have, that makes me ask a question.
Yeah.
So, and I appreciate the fact that, like, it's new and you continue to look at them, like you do all rules. But is there, like, a cadence for the rule review? I mean, like, if you, if we approve this and it, you know, goes through the whole process and gets a stamp, and then next month, you find out there's something that needs to be changed. Could we start it all over again?
What would happen is we would make some changes. We would come back to this board. We would ask this board to release it for public comment, and we would start all over again.
Right. And isn't it up to us to set the agenda and ask for those things? Is that how that works? Or what triggers, aside from, what triggers?
What triggers rule changes?
Outside of legal change, the statutes.
Yeah. Um, anytime that we're gonna, if we're gonna ask for something to change that is currently in the rules, and if we're gonna change our practice or what's currently happening, we would need to come and ask for permission for that, and that would start here.
So either the department or the board itself could request that.
Thank you.
And I would say that some good examples of that have been the push on, um, our early childhood from licensing, right? That wasn't something that necessarily came from internal. That came from, um, you and, um, you know, the governor's office saying, we need to look at this, right? Um, and this is something that changes and thinks we need to do it. There wasn't anything specifically about licensing and learns that caused us to make the overhaul that we did, but I think we're better for it now.
Board members, any additional questions or comments? The floor will be open for a motion then.
Make a motion to approve the amended rules to identify ADA as a regulatory authority of the program instead of DHS.
There is a motion to approve the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Keener. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, the next set of rules is the rules governing dyslexia screening and interventions. These rules were brought to the board back in May ninth, twenty twenty-four, and released for the first round of public comment. Um, we, dyslexia has always been a big discussion, and we anticipated that we would have lots of public comment, which we did. And we actually welcome it because we think it makes it, makes the rules better as we go through the process. These rules were released not once, but twice for public comment. Um, there were lots of changes in terms of trying to get our systems aligned. Um, we built in the new Atlas screener in which we were trying to pull in the dyslexia screening at the same time and be able to set a statewide cut of identifying a student for dyslexia. We think that's a good thing, all right? We're building, we're building that screening system. We have experts on our committees who are helping set those cuts. Um, but instead of each individual school doing screeners and determining, it's, it's set now at the state level that tag, that says a kid needs more, um, screening or assessment based on how they did on the initial screener. So we feel like there's some things there from the change from the first time you saw this to the second time you've seen it. Um, the yellow are changes that were made to public comments the first round. The blue are changes that were made to these rules from public comment the second round. So you can see anything that's in yellow in here was a response to a change from public comment. Blue, much more reduced because I think we've got, we got it right. Um, some of the, the, the big things had to do with timelines. Um, if you remember the first time that you saw these rules, um, I think, Ms. Woods, you actually asked about this a couple of times. I think we had that fifteen day, like, it was fifteen days for this, and then it was like ten days for this, and then it was like, and it made it confusing. And a lot of the comments were around that. So we clarified here to say, learns require screening within the first thirty days. The day that you're screened, if you are, if it's indicated that you need additional assessments because then it pulls you in, you have thirty days from that point to get your additional assessments for your conferences to be held and begin providing intervention. So it, instead of us having those individual days, it's thirty days here, and then there's thirty days here, and services should be provided if that's what's needed.
So we're hoping that most kids that are identified are getting services starting November timeframe?
Yes, and, you know, when you think about the, the initial part of school, I mean, this puts it kinda close to when parent-teacher conferences are happening. It puts it in line with our assessment rules for screening our students. Um, so I think we're, previously, we saw the wait gang. We'd screen kids, and then we would wait. And we, that philosophy of let them grow up a little bit. They're immature. They just need time. Um, they just haven't been exposed. Um, and maybe that's true for some kids, but we believe even if you haven't been exposed, that you need intensive intervention earlier than later, and it needs to start. So with this kind of forces, I mean, at the latest, for a student in K one-two, you should be receiving services by day sixty if you were screened according to the timeline. That would be the latest.
Mr. Bragg?
So are older grades screened or through?
Yes, so if you are in grades, if you're above third grade, um, and you show a reading deficiency, then you should be being screened with your appropriate screener, um, and we have screeners built into the Atlas system, all right? But you can also begin providing services to students. If you have a student who's scoring in a Level One in fourth, fifth, sixth grade, they're not on reading level, and they need structured literacy intervention, right? And so the same foundational skills that are gonna be used to instruct students with dyslexia are the same grounded fundamental skills you need to teach a child to read.
But even through possibly high school?
Yes. Yeah, and should be happening. And, 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 does it happen with fidelity right now, Mr. Bragg? No, I think it's very confusing, and so hopefully be able to put in a state system where we have clear scores, better guidance. Hopefully, that's gonna get tighter and cleaner.
Board members, questions to my left? I do have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will say, when we have something, I think it was a hundred and thirty-six pages of public comment, it would have been nice to have more than twenty-four hours to review. So I was scrambling last night to try to get an understanding of what those public comments are. Is there anything else in public comments that's outstanding that you all felt wasn't answered?
Um, I believe that, that legal followed up with Dr. Pride's team, and they reviewed every public comment from the first round and the second round again. Some of the, um, the latest public comments, I think, that we're, we were getting answers to had to be, were more around the assessment um, because we're going to the statewide screener and the AI around that. And so the answers around that, making sure our assessment team, um, our vendors, our committee, making sure we were all on the same page there. But as far as all the public comments being addressed and none outstanding.
You answer them all in there.
Yeah, I feel like we, I feel like they addressed all the ones that needed to be addressed.
Okay. This is something that, um, let's see, it's on page three, and it's the definition of a dyslexia specialist. This is something I have a small understanding of, but, and I could totally be off here. So in a lot of districts right now, for the dyslexia interventions are being done by teachers or paraprofessionals who've done dyslexia training. Is that correct? And does this change that?
This doesn't change, this follows what the law says.
Okay.
On page, where it talks about dyslexia interventionist, I think my page numbers may be different than yours. You said page three?
Yes.
It's page two.
Oh, dyslexia specialist, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry. No, no, it does, to me, it does not change it.
Okay, is, is there a difference between dyslexia specialist and interventionist?
Um, the interventionist, a lot of times, is not a certified teacher.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Because you could have a tutor or a paraprofessional. The specialist has a higher level.
Okay, so the specialist, it's just changing, it, it took away sort of a definition of, of things and just said dyslexia as a whole?
Yeah, so the endorsement of certification in dyslexia, um, so we took out the individual isolated skill sets.
Okay.
Because the programs that have to get certification in dyslexia, it's named in there. And then we have to identify and approve which of those programs it would be for you to qualify for that.
Okay, and then this, so then therefore an interventionist, this doesn't change how districts are currently staffing interventions, does it?
No.
Okay.
It does not.
Those are my questions. Board members, additional questions? I know this represents a lot of work by your team over the past decade and a lot of work by school districts. Um, and I know there's still a lot of work to be done.
There is.
A new batch of students every year.
Yep.
To serve well.
I'll make a motion, but I was also gonna make a comment just based on the hundred and thirty-six pages. I think that shows in the state how big of a deal dyslexia is for a lot of students, um, and so I'm just proud of us for moving forward with this. My favorite thing that the secretary says is, I just want kids to learn to read.
You know, it's been proven to reduce the number of dyslexia, um, identifications as high-quality early learning.
There you go. We're just working all as a team here, so, anyway. On that note, I will, um, motion to release the rules to the ACL.
Yeah, yeah, that's where they'll have next.
Yes, to the next level.
There's a motion by Ms. Woods to approve the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Ms. Hunter. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we have the high school course offerings.
Good morning. Kevinnie Pride, Assistant Commissioner of Learning Services. And I am before you today, Arkansas Public School Districts and Open Enrollment Charter Schools are required to offer a minimum number of unique courses per the DESI Rules Governing Standards for Accreditation of Arkansas Public Schools and School Districts. And, um, I want to just sort of give you a high-level overview of some changes and additions for the unique courses that are required to be offered. So, um, and you should have the attachment in your, uh, agenda. But in general, one of the, the changes we made is we wanted to make sure that we noted the accelerated courses options uh, for each of the core areas for math, science, um, literacy, and social studies. And those options include advanced placement, Cambridge ACE, international, IB, international baccalaureate, and/or concurrent courses. So you'll see there is an asterisk in every, uh, of, each of the core areas that denotes that they must offer accelerated learning offerings across those four core areas. Um, and we do have a list of those courses in an additional document because it's just too lengthy to put them all on here. But there is an additional document that schools get that show all of the courses, and we have a course code management system by which they can go and look at those courses and the appropriateness in the sequence of courses that students can take across accelerated learning. So that's also, um, a change. And then also, we have listed, um, the computer science courses, and you can see all of them listed there. That's an addition. Before, we, we had a general statement about them and referenced them to the bigger list, but we've listed them all, um, this time. And also, we've indicated, again, with a notation of an asterisk, that, um, the courses that are available for eighth grade, and that's to your far right on the list as well, so you see that. That's there. And then I would say you'll see a few changes in course names. For example, English one through four, uh, previously was grade nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. But with, um, the opportunities for students to accelerate, we didn't want, we took, those were the only ones that were listed by grade. And we just changed that, that name so that you would know the sequence that the courses needed to be taken in, but also that students had the opportunity to take, take those when they were ready. Um, and I would say that, um, pretty much sums up the changes. Everything else is pretty much the same as it was last year when we saw this.
Board members, to my left, questions?
Um, how does our secretary feel about this inventory of courses?
So, great question. I think this is really starting to line up with the vision that we see in access to make sure that we're not blocking courses to make sure that we're not blocking courses and tying them to grade levels. When, when students are ready for accelerated opportunities, and that's one of the, the biggest priorities that we have, is we need to make sure that we can provide that. And I've, and I've said this kind of publicly a, a few times, I, I feel like sometimes some of our, um, most neglected students in this state are our highest performing students, because we're not letting them get access to high quality content and rigor when they're ready. We're waiting for them to achieve a certain grade level. So, um, th- this is going to be comprehensive, and we're actually working on building out more accelerated opportunities when we look at access implementation, because we're going to be rewriting with this course code catalog a standard weight for some of these, um, courses, whether it's concurrent credit or an honors course, or an, an AP course, or an IB course. So this is, I think, the first step towards implementation and moving it in the right direction. And it's work that's going to continue to be ongoing as we're putting together our work groups and getting feedback from stakeholders. Just, just, just simple things, by saying like, English one, and not grade nine English, is starting to change that mindset. And I know that doesn't sound like a big deal, but semantics matter, and this is helping to set that mindset that when kids are ready to earn high school credit, especially if they're in middle school, we need to open up those opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Aliva.
Mr. Bragg?
If a school doesn't offer one of the courses and a student wants that course, does the school have any obligation to try to accommodate them, either maybe through remote or?
So, so this list is the minimum requirements that all schools are expected to offer, okay?
Each school has to offer all?
So, yeah, so, so we, we have more courses than this in our course catalog. But when you're looking at this, you can see English Language Arts, they have to offer three credits from the list below, right? They have to offer two from the list below. There are certain, so this is like the minimum education that all schools have to provide students in the state, and those courses are on this list. If a, if a student wants to take a course, though, that their school's not offering, we do have like Course Choice that was coming available, and that's, more information about that's coming out. Um, you do have virtual options, a lot of times, that schools will offer their students. And again, as we're getting into this arena of more choice and creating better pathways, um, those are the conversations that we need to keep having. At the same time, we need to be having conversations about what courses do we not need to be offering, okay? For example, we actually had AP courses that we offered in our state that no college in the state of Arkansas would give it credit for, because they didn't have that. So why are we paying for an A, a course that nobody in the state's going to give colleges credit for, right? So we're going through and making sure that we're really looking at our courses, making sure that they're rigorous, making sure that they make sense, and making sure that there is a pathway developed for that course to take that kid past high school. So this, this was what would before been the thirty-eight, right? But we went well beyond thirty-eight when we started requiring you had to have AP classes, right? Or you had to have your computer science classes. So this is just, we felt it was important to bring it to you with the changes around acceleration, um, because it's no longer just AP, and we wanted to put that before you. We also thought it was important that you could see, um, the computer science courses listed, the ones that were indicated for eighth grade, um, and get your approval on that.
I have some questions, but I want to check board members. So previously, was it that four AP courses are required? Is that still required, or is it that you can do other Cambridge or other programs?
So access in our legislation for access for acceleration, it opened up where you could offer other accelerated opportunities, concurrent credit, IB, AP, ACE, the Cambridge piece. So it's opening it up. Beforehand, it was only AP.
Is concurrent credit included in that?
Yes.
So concurrent credit is included as a accelerated pathway?
Yes.
Do we have, um, any authority over those concurrent credit classes to understand how rigorous or not they are?
So, great question. So Dr. Warden, our Commissioner of Higher Education, is actually establishing a statewide training for educators who are going to be teaching those courses, so that we make sure that we have alignment to the rigor of higher ed with making sure that the, the standards or the matching high school course are met. So before, we had APSIs for AP, which was the training, okay, Advanced Placement Institute. We're now going to be offering training over here to ensure that the rigor for higher ed is there.
This summer.
Yeah, this summer.
But I'd say concurrent credit's the only one of those programs that doesn't have a uniform assessment. Correct.
Correct, there's not a uniform assessment.
Okay. When we're talking about, so English, take for instance the ELA, English one, English two accelerated ELA offerings, what are those accelerated ELA offerings? And is that something that this board is approving now, those offerings? Or will that be approved at a later date?
Yeah, so English one through four would be what you, you know, you would have known as English nine would be English one, two, and ten, so forth. But there are other, there are other options that students can take at an accelerated pace. So for example, they could take, um, challenging my memory here, it's, um...
But I guess the way I read this here, though, is...
They could take a seminar course, um, they could take, um, it could be an AP course, it could take, it could be another course that, and we have a guide for this, I just can't remember all of the English ones right now off the top of my head. But, uh, we do have a, a progression to show what are options that students can take at an accelerated pace.
I think it would have been helpful for us to see those accelerated offerings to prove this here. But the way I'm reading this is a district will no longer have to, have to have English three or English four, because it's an option.
Well, they, so, they have to offer that, and, and for the majority of students, they're going to have those students in those courses. Those students that are ready, though, they also could...
But it says like must offer two, so they could offer English Public Relations and English Documents instead of English three and English four? Am I reading this wrong?
No, um, so what you're seeing is in terms of, um, what is required for, and I guess we did that to divide in terms of the assessment piece. So, um, but also students, once they get past that English ten, they also could have different options by which, um, they wouldn't have a state assessment that aligned directly to our, our criteria for...
So we might have high schools that aren't, aren't offering like what you would use to say was a junior English, English three?
And so these were courses that were brought to the State Board previously. We created English eleven and twelve courses that, that matched pathways.
Okay.
Right? So you had a STEM pathway, so when you're taking that English eleven course, it had a STEM emphasis. So you're reading more technical writing stuff. So, so high schools could offer those courses in place of that English, traditional English eleven, alright? Um, but English, old English nine, old English two, which is now one, two, have to be offered to everyone, because those are the alignments to the state assessment, alright? But as we're trying to create better pathways, while we're trying to create more meaningful coursework for students, you're starting to see some of those pathway course, the, the standards for English eleven are still there, but you might not be reading Macbeth, you might be reading a technical manual, um, for something related to STEM.
Okay, I didn't, sorry to go back and forth, I didn't fully understand how that was working, and so... Yeah, so, I, I think with that, so, speak to me a little bit about, it used to be that you had to have thirty-eight offered or required, and this is saying twenty-two, when did that change?
No, no, these are courses that are required to be offered for students, and, uh, this is not the same as the exact list for the graduation requirement. So there's a handout that shows you the number of...
Student graduation requirements, and what is, what is the student graduation requirement right now?
So twenty-two credits, that there are four ELA, three math, three science, you're challenging my memory, I have it here.
Okay, but so this is, that's, that's a different set of things than, and do we, does our board approve the graduation requirements? I know local boards can go above and beyond that.
Right, so the graduation requirement is something that's set between the Higher Coordinating Board and the State Board, right? So it's been set at twenty-two graduation credits for a long time. We have not brought any changes to this board around the twenty-two graduation requirements in recent years. What we have brought are changes around, the last time you probably saw a controversial change to this list was when we removed journalism.
Yes.
Right, and that caused all kinds of drama, right? So what you're seeing now, in terms of what we've added to this list, is the change around acceleration, saying that you no longer have to have just AP, right? And then we also explicitly stated on here the computer science courses, because there is an expectation in law that all schools are offering a computer science class. There's also an expectation in law that we indicate four of those courses that can be offered in eighth grade. Other than that, it is the same, and as far as the courses and standards, standards you guys have approved. So these English courses, the standards for English, we've already brought to you guys, and you've approved that. What we're showing you really is just, here are, here are the courses that we require school districts, that they have to have at least the required amounts off of this. And this is what we go by standards for accreditation for. So if a school district didn't offer the correct number of science courses, then they could be brought to this board for a standards for accreditation violation. And so we're wanting to make sure that you're aware of what courses are on there. But the only changes are really around the accelerated pathways with AP.
Thank you. If, if you look nationwide, twenty-two credits, we have high graduation rates, but we have a low bar for graduation with that twenty-two credits. Would that have to be a law change, or would that be a change by our board?
Um, I think that would have to be, I, I have to look, let me go back and look.
And I know some districts go above and beyond that, and they require more of their students. Um, but if you look at twenty-two, I mean, that's less than six credits a year for students. And as we talk about seat time, that's a pretty low bar for our students. Great, I'll look forward to you all doing that. Um, but I, but I, I also look forward to, I thi- I think, I think students, I, I think this is a minimum. I mean, I know it's a minimum is what we're saying.
It is minimum.
But I think we should up the minimum to some extent, I think students deserve more opportunities. And I, I know, like, now that the world is open for virtual, students do have a lot of virtual options, but I think in person is important, too. And so we think in the future, you know, should we push a little harder to require districts to offer more courses, more options for students?
So I think the, the answer to that question potentially is yes, right? I think that where we have to identify roadblocks on our side is one with licensure. So if you have a science teacher, or you have a math teacher, and you're asking them to teach multi, if you're a small district, and we have to remember, most of our districts in our, our state are very, very small and rural, where they may only have one teacher who's teaching seventh grade math, eighth grade math, ninth grade math, tenth grade, like, so... And, and so every time we put a requirement that you have to offer that course, then you have to have a period and someone doing it, which is fine. And I think that's where the virtual options sometimes come in, and I think that's where we have to look at our licensing requirement and who can teach what, what courses. So, I would agree.
It used to be that every student had to take one virtual course, is that still on the law?
No.
Okay, and do we have any sort of requirements as to how many of these have to be in person versus virtual offerings?
No.
Okay. Do y'all do any sort of audit of that way, to get an understanding of, you know, this school district is offering this percent of high school courses virtually versus in person?
They report that in, um, their, in the E-School system, um, the teacher of record, and if the course is virtual or in person. And we do see some of our, our districts, and, and some districts who have been in trouble and some who have not, where they have a large offering of virtual courses, right? And so, um, it's about ensuring the quality and putting practices in place where virtual courses are being offered, um, at a high standard, and that kids are being successful in them. And we have places where that's happening.
Okay, I have two more sets of questions, I'm sorry, it's my last, y'all. One more question for me.
I'm not sure why you sat down and got off the hook.
So I know, I mean, we've talked about acceleration, a lot of middle school students might want to be taking the Algebra I, Geometry, but that's not required for middle schools, junior highs to offer the eighth grade level, or is it?
It's not required, but I will tell you, since Secretary Aliva has arrived in our state, the numbers of kids who are graduating with associate's degrees are continuing to rise. The expectation in the law for access with acceleration, the guidance that's coming out from this department around that, it's going to continue to, to increase. Your, Tiffany's team has done a wonderful job of taking the academic standards for, um, ELA and math and backwards math them all the way to elementary school, so that kids can be put on these accelerated pathway pieces. And so you're going to have school districts who are going to automatically start putting those in place. We're at the beginning, we're having to change systems work to get acceleration in our state where it needs to be. And that's where we're at right now.
And there are two more pieces that I'm excited about, one is the standardization, so the kids that are taking concurrent credit, that they actually transfer to the next place. I, I know someone taking business law at UAC CB, and it is not accepted at UCA, so they're stuck. Right, and so I'm so excited, again, that somebody paid attention and is correcting that. And finally, the long-term goal being that the box that is checked by default is the advanced math course, and you have to opt out of it, as opposed to the way we're doing things now, but again, long-term goals.
Another one I had written down was world languages. Um, is that, is there ever been a conversation about requiring high schools to offer four years of world, of world languages instead of two? I know for accelerated students who are looking to go to colleges, colleges would...
You see foreign language, um, you're going to start seeing that come up in our IB pathways, right? And so as school districts are starting to increase those opportunities, you're going to see those kind of courses being offered. At this point, most schools, um, if you have a student who's going on to year three or year four, a lot of, a lot of times, they're having to do a virtual oshum, unless they have a teacher who can, um, continue that on.
Yeah.
But I'd, but I'd say overall, I think, like, to your point, as we get into the next phases, maybe part of that conversation is, what is that list of required accelerated courses at a middle school? And then maybe even, what does that look like at a, at elementary school? Um, one, one of the, I think, you know, neat pathways in like our diploma of merit is we recognize a seal of bilingual literacy as, as an advanced credential on the high school diploma. So that may encourage some more school districts to offer more world languages. But should we be making sure that there is a pathway to complete a program, right? Where you're not just getting the introductory courses. So those are, uh, uh, we're not going to have all the answers now, but that, that's the conversations we're having now with kind of reimagining expectations for students. I, I think twenty-two graduation credits is low. I think we could have higher expectations for our students. If we're going to prepare them to be successful in what we call one of our three Es, is, is making sure that there's a pathway to be employed, enlisted, or enrolled. What do those real expectations mean? And what does it mean for a student to be college and career-ready when they graduate? So those are, the, those aren't conversations that just you finalize, right? That's just kind of the way of work, that, that is ongoing. And we got to start by building the expectation, supporting districts, which shaping that mindset, but then continually engaging in this dialogue and this conversation. And I, I think those are all great suggestions.
Yeah, and I think you'd be hard pressed to find any school in the, any district in the state that this is all, that, that they only offer the minimum.
Right.
Most are offering more. And going back to your foreign language, you can stack Spanish three, Spanish four, right? So if, the school has to offer, they don't have, they have to have it in their schedule, Spanish one and Spanish two. If you have a kid who's ready for Spanish three, you can stack those courses and blend your kids together. So there's opportunities for that.
I think long-term it will, will be exciting, we know research says sooner you start a foreign language, the better. And we think about Taiwan setting that goal, that we could push elementary schools to start. And there's many virtual options that are great for teaching second languages, that I think we could push from there. My last set of questions, sorry, was around the computer science?
Yeah.
So it's in law that a computer science course has to be offered in eighth grade? What, but do you have to take it in eighth grade? What is the requirement?
I think it's in law that, for, I may have to get Ross up here for this, is that four courses have to be identified that can be offered in eighth grade for computer science?
It was brought to my attention that computer science A is a very high-level course, and maybe shouldn't be in eighth grade? Has there been any conversations about why these ones, ones were selected?
Lift that up a little bit. Uh, so, there is a requirement in law that we have to identify four courses that are available within the eighth grade. So when we really get into the list here, and you have our full computer science list there, so that's every computer science course that we have. Um, so our introduction to computer science is really our, you know, that entry level. Um, but then we have had schools that have been doing computer science A, like, that's what their request has been. There is an AP computer science principles that you will see on here, um, that is there as well. And this has been more built by, the way the law was passed, us to have appropriate courses for eighth graders becomes a little bit challenging, too, because if you're familiar with, anytime I get up and talk to you about it, we have pathways, and we go to a level one, a level two, a level three, we build on skills. And so we really have to identify the courses that have the most foundational skills. And AP computer science A and the principles, both are kind of the most foundational that we can pull out, where if we pull any of those other courses, the first course is going to be introduction to computer science. The second course then will be, you know, we get into these advanced databases, digital electronic, those all become a second or a third course, so they're not appropriate to be an eighth grade course, and so...
But they're not required to take it in eighth grade?
Yeah, they're not required, no. So they have to obviously take a course to graduate, um, and the, you know, the period to be able to earn that can be in that window. Um, but we do have that opportunity for those, that obviously this was kind of done before acceleration, but it does give that accelerated opportunity for a student who might want to go through a really robust computer science pathway, and their school has those opportunities, they can get started a little bit earlier in that eighth grade window.
Is there still, at the middle school level, is there still some sort of requirement for a computer course?
So there's still a coding block requirement. So there's still a coding block requirement. And so that is, it varies based off district. We give them a lot of options, a lot of them embedded into what we call key code, which is a mixture of keyboarding and then, you know, learning the fundamentals of keystrokes. And then the coding block as well, but they still do have a coding block requirement that has to be met in that middle school block.
And then my question was, are any of these courses like an introductory into AI? And where is AI fitting in into these courses or how we're approaching that?
So all of our computer science programs have gone through a big revision this past year. So in our CTE world, every three years, we revisit all of our programs and look at all of our occupational codes and instructional codes, to make sure they align with our post-secondary partners and align with industry. So in that, there has been some adjustments that there is obviously that in it, but at the same time, it is still, I won't say so new, but there's so much to be learned that it, there's not going to be one that's just specifically focused to, you know, artificial intelligence specifically. Yes, in many of these different groups, you're going to see, or I'm going to say groups, different pathways, you're going to see the conversation coming up in probably all of them and some of our standards.
So you said you revisit them every three years. Does, do the standards get changed every three years?
It varies. I mean, it truly depends on this. Now, I will say, the, the computer science standards for this year are the ones that have been updated. I mean, it, they hadn't really been reviewed since their inception for most part, so they have had some pretty big revisions. We went from nine pathways to four, and that was a part of our full, our full pathway revisions that we've talked with y'all about before. Because we're going in the whole world of career technical education down from sixty-three to forty-four as well, to make sure our alignment from SIP and SOC codes with our post-secondary to employment as well.
Does that come to our board to approve, or is that in-house?
So within the standards within career technical education, so, I mean, there's still something that you, that you're made aware of. We also go with the Career Education and Workforce Development Board, that's seen by Department of Commerce as well with our standards.
Can I jump in, since you're ahead of this question? So when we're talking now about AI, because Bo and I were just sitting here talking about it, is there ever, when, if we wanted to make an AI-required course, I remember when Governor Hutchinson, like, laid down the law, and he was like, we're offering computer science. How does that process work?
I'm going to let some other people talk about that one. In regards to building one, I can tell you.
We were just sitting here talking about how we're behind the eight ball in a lot of areas, and so as we start looking to future courses.
When I leave here, I'm going to go put it in ChatGPT and ask us to make it a course, and I'll be back to you tomorrow. Or I'll be back to you by three. I could do it pretty quickly.
You got to be careful, because I was telling Bo that I was looking something up yesterday, and it gave me a fake case. And I was so glad that I went to source it, because I was like, I have never, it was like so on point. It didn't exist. And ChatGPT finally said, oh, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. And I was like, all right. So I was fact-check.
So, so actually, there is, I believe there is a governor's task force on AI right now. We have two or three different groups here at the department who are working on AI information and just guidance for school districts. You're going to start seeing AI in terms of, like, professional development and developing that. Our team is in the boat learning right now. And so those are things you're going to see. I think AI is not going to necessarily be a standalone. AI is going to be in everything that we do. You're going to start seeing it within your English Language Arts standards, you're going to start seeing it in your math classes, you're going to start seeing it in your graphic design. It's going to be everywhere. So just your intro and understanding of what it is, yes, you're going to start seeing standards pop up on that.
My, my first grader and I are already having those conversations, because we're seeing more generative content. And so I think many of y'all are thinking about that, that starts with elementary standards.
Yeah. And it's about the being, the being able to even, like, decipher what's real, what's not real.
Right.
You know, but it's, it's hitting everything. It's in every element right now, and it's, and it's going faster than we're moving.
I was going to say this for part of my report at the end, but she teed it up, so. Not to hijack it or anything, but I think we need to be careful in our vision of AI, not just associated with the, the computer science subject, or it's good to hear you say that, what you just said, Stacy, but also a focus on training our teachers how to utilize AI for their jobs. And I think it's kind of a prescription for burnout, if it's, if it's learned to use effectively. There's tools out there. And I don't know what that looks like as far as professional development, maybe a little bit like science, uh, science of reading, reading professional development. I don't think it needs to be one six-hour, you know, course in the summer and then forgot. Maybe we need to really think about, okay, the requirements of professional development, in-depth professional development, and what type of supports can we give the teachers through the school year to ensure that they're using those tools through the year to, to benefit them and, and make their, do their jobs more efficiently.
Yeah. And, and right now, folks are wrestling with the policies behind it, you know, with student work and teacher work and giving credits. I mean, there, so there's a lot of policy being written right now around it and the guidance on that. So I think those will be some interesting conversations and things for us to share with the board.
Madam Chair, this conversation illustrates why we will miss you a great deal. And clearly, you're ready for another seven years.
Well, you're, I'm setting me up, but your meetings might be shorter. But I, I, I do, I do think I did want to take the opportunity not to just look at those issues, but to just reiterate that this is our minimum bar, and that our minimum bar for graduation requirements are lower too. And we want, we want our students to succeed, and the more opportunities they have in different areas, the better. So if we can keep encouraging districts to offer more courses, and maybe at some point revisit the high school graduation requirements.
Dr. Moore, thank you for asking about five questions I was about to ask. Seriously, you know, I really appreciate you asking those tough questions, because this is very important. I am a huge advocate of access and the launch of it. Commissioner Warren, him and his team has done a tremendous job. To Mr. Bragg's point, he asked earlier if the consideration far as virtual options and stuff like that, when we're looking at those roadmaps and when we're looking at the outreach, let's make sure that we're definitely looking at the big picture of rural schools, small school districts that do not have a lot of the resources. So I don't know what that vision looks like, but if we have to partner in an insane way with two-year universities, trade schools, want to make sure that those conversations are being held, and also those things are on tape.
With that, though, isn't there something in learns that, I mean, if a student requests a course at the high school, that they have to be able to take it or offer it virtually? Okay, we'll revisit that later.
I can hear what you said.
That if a student, if, if there is one of these courses that a school district didn't offer, does the student have the ability to talk with the school to offer it to them virtually?
So that was the course choice.
Yes.
Aspects. And so there's guidance being written and rules for on course choice that will come to this board. We've built a platform around that, so there's an opportunity for that. So there'll be more information coming.
Okay. So just thinking about the opportunities and access for students. Okay, with that, board members, questions? Comments? Okay. The floor will be open for a motion on the high school course offerings.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the high school required, high school courses.
A motion by Mr. Henderson. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Bragg. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Looking at the agenda, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break before we start our next item number six. So let's start back here at eleven oh five. We're good this way. Okay, we will start back to our action agenda. We have item number six, consideration of a recommendation by the PLSB. Ms. Whitney James, or Mr. Schultz will be going over procedures for us probably. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board. Just a brief reminder of the hearing procedures. Review of a PLSB action is conducted pursuant to Section one four four, or one-one-four of the Rules Governing Code of Ethics. In this case, the educator is elected to appear and present oral arguments, looks through their attorney. So the educator or their attorney is given ten minutes to present oral arguments. The PLSB attorney will also have ten minutes to present oral arguments. The chair may allow additional time for good cause show. This hearing, the State Board, is to consider the transcript, pleadings, and the oral arguments only. However, at the request of the Chair of the State Board, the educator and the professional license, the PLSB investigator for the case may provide testimony. No other testimony should be heard. All testimony from the educator or the PLSB investigator shall be taken under oath.
So we'll start with the oath for those who are planning to speak today. If you would stand up, please, for those planning to speak. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. We start with the educator or attorney. We'll have ten minutes to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, and I doubt seriously that I would exhaust ten minutes. Dr. Moore and other members of this board, my name is Kayem Eddings. And I say this not because I was raised right by my mom and my daddy, my mother, who was a forty-nine-year educator in Little Rock School District. And they always taught me to be polite in public. But I say this because, one, I mean it, and two, it's the right thing to say. It is absolutely my pleasure to be here on behalf of DJ Mars. And you'll hear from, from Mr. Mars. And Mr. Mars will tell you that, you know, something happened in the locker room at Quimby Junior High School back in May twenty-twenty-four. And Mr. Mars won't beat around the bush, he'll tell you that, and he'll concede that as a head football coach during those football activities, he was the one in charge. And he's going to tell you that because as a leader and as a coach, he believes that leadership comes from the top down. So he was the one who was responding. So he was the one who was responsible. And it's undeniable what happened because there's this video there. There's been testimony in the PLSB investigation of some of those things that happened. And Mr. Mars won't try to minimize what happened or the impact of what happened. Because Mr. Mars is a leader of young men and those things happened under his leadership, on his watch, back in May twenty twenty-four in that locker room. Mr. Mars accepted responsibility and did not appeal the recommendation of the PLSB that his license be placed on probation for two years and a two hundred and fifty-dollar fine. However, Mr. Mars is eager to be here this morning. Not to push back against the recommendation of the PLSB, but to respond to some of the allegations that were made about him before this board. Some of the allegations that impugn his character before this board. And before now, because, as you know, PLSB proceedings are confidential, Mr. Mars has not had that opportunity, and he realizes it is an opportunity. I'm told by the investigators that this investigation was one of the most in-depth and all-encompassing investigations ever done by the PLSB. And I say that to say this. The allegations were investigated thoroughly. Because the investigation was in-depth, because the rationale included, and the investigation's conclusions were reasonable and to support the recommendation. Mr. Mars encourages you, urges you to accept that recommendation because he has accepted responsibility for what's happened. Now, Mr. Mars and I both recognize that there's value in public discourse related to issues of children and in schools in particular. There's absolutely value in that. But there is no value in lodging false accusations against an educator, particularly geared toward the aim of seeking a result that you want when there's no basis in fact for it. Mr. Mars can tell his story much better than I can, so at this point, I'll step aside. And if you'd like to hear from Mr. Mars, he's available. He's been sworn on the oath, and he's here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eddings. We will take Ms. James now to testify, and then we will open up the floor for questions.
Yes, ma'am, and I do have my investigator here who could be sworn in if you have any questions for her. In this case regarding Mr. Mars, the Ethics Subcommittee recommended probation of license for two years, a two hundred and fifty-dollar fine, coursework, reading, and training with written reflections. The Ethics Subcommittee also recommended quarterly reports from the educator supervisor, which would come to the State Board while on probation regarding how his professional practices are progressing. This case was initially on the consent agenda since Mr. Mars did accept the recommendation, and the case was pulled for the review hearing today. The PLSB found that there is a preponderance of evidence that he violated standards one, two, and three of the code of ethics, and that he should receive the recommended sanction. And the Ethics Subcommittee gave a very detailed rationale for its decision, which was provided in your folder. I'm happy to review that at any time with you or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. James. With that, do you, your team, have any more comments that you want to make? Okay, so with that, we'll open the floor up for questions. And these can be questions of the educator, the attorney, or the PLSB or staff. So let's see, I will start to my left with questions.
I have some questions.
Mr. Wood?
First, and primarily to Coach Moore, is I have some questions if you'll step up here. The allegations that the, I think there were a few boys involved. I don't know exactly how to lump everything together, but I'm going to call them the May tenth incidents, okay? Roughly the time that you were notified that two or three boys had been specifically harassed and bullied in the locker room. And you learned of that on approximately May tenth, twenty twenty-four. In those, those the conduct that was revealed to you in that, we had allegations of Orbeez guns being brought into the locker room and shot at kids. We had allegations of a whip being used in the locker room on some kids. We had, I think that that might have been in response to towel popping that was occurring in the locker room. We had kids claiming to be stuffed in lockers with balls being thrown at them while they were in there. And what I would consider, we had video evidence of organized fighting occurring where kids were bringing boxing gloves and having duke outs in the locker room. We also had allegations of some really bad stuff, sexual in nature assaults on kids where kids were humping other kids. Those are all very concerning. And I have some concerns about the response to what happened after you learned of those things. But I want to first focus on what did you know before May tenth that was occurring in the locker room? Were you aware of any bullying or conduct similar to hazing that was occurring in the locker room prior to May tenth, twenty twenty-four?
No, sir, and my assistants were not either. No, like I said, no one had brought anything to us anytime we had an issue in the locker room. And there were times where I might have, would have heard, you know, someone getting loud, or you hear, you know, something where they're not transitioning, getting ready to go back to school, or getting to the field. Where, you know, we would, we would hear that and call them out and address that, and several people said that. To the allegations of a lot of the things, first of all, the boxing glove issue was I saw the video as well. It was, I didn't know about it initially. It was sent in later. But that was from several years ago because we knew that by the shimmels, by the outfit that they were wearing. That was an issue that was found out. That student was turned over to the Dean of Students and punished, and from the football team when that happened. That, that was, like I said, that was an issue that was handled and found out very quickly from a long back.
Okay, so I don't really understand your answer then. It sounds like you're saying that the boxing gloves video that was provided to us occurred long, years before May tenth, twenty twenty-four?
Our junior high wears, like I said, they wear the black shimmels. I say shimmels, that's their workout top and bottom. Same thing with the video with the locker room, because I looked into it, like I said, a lot, and over and over once that I was made aware of it.
When did you become aware of that, of that boxing?
After I'd already done my investigation.
After May tenth?
I'm sorry, when did I become aware of a situation with boxing gloves? A couple of years ago when that happened.
A couple of years prior to May tenth, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, sir. That was different kids. Like I said, they were, those kids that were the ninth grade, like in the seventh grade.
Kids, I understand.
Yes, sir.
They're going to progress into the same school.
Yes, sir.
But it sounds to me then like bullying, fighting, organized fighting was occurring in the locker room prior to May tenth, twenty twenty-four, and you knew about it.
That was two years ago when they were in the seventh grade, yes, sir, and it was handled, and, I mean, it was, it was extended, like I said, we, we found the student who brought the gloves and removed them and turned it over to the Dean of Students for punishment then.
Any other incidents other than boxing gloves prior to May tenth, twenty twenty-four?
No, sir.
Okay, what about? I would like to ask, just to point a procedure, in using student names, I'm trying to be very careful here. Students that I believe are no longer in the school had statements included in the record, and I would like to reference that. Is it appropriate for me to use the student's name?
We had actually created a cheat sheet with student numbers and names. It wasn't made part of this report. You might be able to give enough description that we could tell you which number it is.
Sure. At the very end of the investigation report, page four, four fifty-one, is a transcript of an interview with a now former student. Would it be appropriate to reference that person by name?
That person is S nine.
S nine?
Yes.
Okay. And can I give his initials?
I'll check the cheat sheet here.
Okay. I can't confirm because I don't have the cheat sheet in front of me, but I'm going to just rely on what you said to refer to it as S nine. So there was a student that gave an interview that was transcribed and part of the record that, and I'm, I apologize for frank language that's about to be used. Everyone has brought kids to the room, and I kind of hate that, but we have to do what we have to do. A teabagging incident occurred. Are you aware of that?
No, sir, and the student that we're talking about, I mean, had accusations of things that happened in the high school locker room but never played on the high school team. They, they were actually like removed from the team for grades by the parents. And then the parents had a meeting to come back and came back for just a short time of the offseason and then left the program.
I really, I can't get into the weeds of whether the kid ever played a minute of high school football.
No, I just mean what locker room he would been in. As far as to say the things that were said, that there was an incident at the school that happened with this student, but in the locker room, no, sir.
Did the teabagging situation occur in the locker room?
No, sir.
You don't believe so?
No, sir.
What about pictures being taken of a student on the commode and being shared?
That was also at the school, yes, sir.
What does that mean?
That happened at, not in the fieldhouse. That was an incident that was, that happened in the boys' bathroom of the high school.
A football player? Did it, right? A football player was punished for spreading pictures of kids on the toilet, right?
Yes, well, he was removed from the team at that point, I do believe, so like he never came back to me.
That's not what his story was. His story was not that he was removed from the team at that time. His story, if you're going to adopt his story, was that he was asked to stay on the team. That you told him you were going to throw him off the team, and when he said, okay, he didn't care. You said, wait, no, never mind. I can't throw you off the team. I need you.
That's not true.
Well, that's his story.
That's his story, but that's not true. He was, he was removed from the team, and I had a meeting with his mother. And even because his, was his stepdad at the time was a Pee-wee coach, and they came in and we met after he had been punished for this to try to work him back on the team for his benefit, not for the, for the team. I mean, this was never a senior high football player, so, I mean, this is not something that, I mean, our junior high program's developmental, so like we're working with kids to, and we work with parents still at that point to try to help them because he had been in trouble several other times. And sometimes as a coach, like having those kids in your program, you're able to just kind of develop that and work with them and try to get through to them in a different way that maybe a teacher may not.
That's fine, Coach. My problem is that the question really isn't his character. The question is, what was the athletic department, the football administration's response to these types of activities occurring among football players? That's really the question as it relates to Coach Mars in front of us here. It's not really about what that student was going through and what may have troubled his life and all of that. So it's really about what did you know and what did you do about it, and when did you do these things? That same student in that interview said that the fighting with boxing gloves happened daily, and the coaches didn't care.
That's not true. I go in that locker room before they leave, I like, I have a strict locker room policy. To the point where their helmets hang, and we go through there. That's like the thing with the Orbeez gun that came up, and it said that there were hundreds of bullets. That, that's not true. We go in there every day. We have two loads of laundry that we go into.
You believed that it was true.
I do, I do believe that a kid brought one, yes, sir.
Not because you couldn't, not because you found evidence of it, but because so many kids said it happened that you believed it must have been true.
That so many kids said that one was brought, yes, sir, not that kids were shot with it. That was not what multiple kids, that's not what was said. That was embellished on later, I think, by parents standing right here. When we interviewed kids and we talked to them, a kid did bring one. It was an Orbeez gun, and then it turned into a BB gun, and it turned into hundreds of kids shot, and that wasn't true. And with the bags that they bring in, a kid could bring one because they have bags of clothes that they change into. And we no longer allow that to happen in the locker room, but at the time, they were in and out changing clothes. So a kid could bring one, an Orbeez gun, into a bag and have one there and without screaming and hollering and you know, I mean, we're not in there while they take showers and change. So the fact that the kid said that, I do believe that, but we didn't have multiple stories of kids running around getting shot. That, that was simply added by parents later.
Well, in a minute I will look. I think that that's a fine distinction that I'm not sure I readily accept, that a kid brought an Orbeez gun, but it was never fired at anyone. That's kind of hard to believe, but I'll, I'll review through.
But as I'm not in there, I can only go off of what the kids that I interviewed tell me.
I know, but six or seven or eight of them said this happened. And this was said to the investigator paid for by your school district. This was in her report. The interviews with students. Half a dozen at least referenced the Orbeez gun situation.
That it was brought, not that it was fired and multiple kids were shot, and there were hundreds of bullets or Orbeez loads everywhere. That, because that's what was the initial allegation of it, and that's in that report, it shows us that that's not true.
All right. I will, I will look for that distinction in a minute. There seems to be in the conversation that you had that was transcribed with, I don't remember which mother was involved, if it was Angie Edwards. I think, I think it may have been the Stephanie White conversation. I'm not real sure. But as I read the transcript of that, there seemed to be a bit of relief on your part that when the humping was occurring, that kids had their clothes on. Were you relieved to learn that?
I mean, no, sir. I was, I was, and have been concerned through all of this. As far as, as a football coach who's over that fieldhouse, like the safety of those kids is my responsibility.
I appreciate you saying that.
So, so as far as relief in that aspect, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, that I don't ever remember feeling relief for, I think, the, I don't know what you, like, in the transcript of it.
Several times you wanted to clarify whether anybody was naked or not.
Absolutely, because if a parent comes in and brings something to me, I want to have the full details, especially when they go back and forth, because the language that was being used in that by the mother kept suggesting that, that it was, so, so me and Mr. Stacks, who were in that meeting, were definitely asking those questions to clarify so that we could fully understand what happened. Yes, sir.
Well.
But relief, I don't think, I don't.
All right. It sounded to me like there was a strong emphasis on yours and Mr. Stack's part to, to make a strong differentiation between skin-to-skin humping versus clothed humping. And I am of the opinion that that's not much of a distinction. That the victim in that situation doesn't want it happening in either situation. And so the emphasis on the fact that there were clothes on was rather problematic to me from yours and Mr. Stack's perspective when you were interviewing these mothers. You also have to appreciate that you have mothers who probably extremely emotional about what is happening to their kids. I know that this has been extremely bothering to me to even have to read all of this stuff as a state board member in Little Rock, a hundred miles away from the Quipman schools. And I can only imagine what a mom or a dad would be dealing with as they were dealing with these facts, um, as it was going on. So I I am frustrated in the way that, you know, you you kinda categorized the the things they've said.
And I don't think it was categorization as much as it was that that if when a parent comes to you with a concern, obviously, as educators who deal with this, parents are going to be emotional. And we and we understand that, but it's it's our job to to try to understand the situation as much as possible, just finding out about it in in order to be able to to move forward with with punishments and change and 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 to really understand that situation because oftentimes, a lot of times when parents come and people are emotional, they don't always tell the truth. Or they don't always, or they embellish, or they have only one side, one account of it. So I feel like it would be a lack of uh, my responsibility if I would just to take a parent's word and what they said without without digging into it and really asking questions.
But we're all here because really bad stuff did really happen. Uh, we're not here because this was a made up story. In fact, in the summer after this occurred, four, five, six kids, I don't know the exact number, but some number of kids were convicted by a juvenile court of assault on these young boys. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And they were sentenced to a year probation.
Six months, I believe. Yes, sir.
I believe it was a year, but I that's really neither here nor there. That occurred in July of uh, twenty twenty four. I'll I'll get back to that. I don't wanna get too far ahead. And I'm, I apologize for having so many stones to turn over here. But who, who was in charge of ensuring that Orbeez guns, whips were not brought into the locker room? That kids were not stuffed in lockers and had have balls thrown at them? That organized fighting with boxing gloves was not occurring? That tea, well, I I'll refrain from that in the locker room, but nonetheless, a culture among the football team of of teabagging occurring and pictures of kids on the commode being shared amongst uh, football met uh, text messaging threads. Who was in charge of ensuring that this type of conduct didn't occur in the football program?
When they are in the football program, i- it is me.
I have not mentioned a single thing that was not brought up by a football player being done while they were in football.
The 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 pictures on the toilet a- and that was S nine?
Was he a football player at the time it happened?
Ye- yes, sir, but I I can't be responsible. I'm not responsible for them when they go home at the end of the day.
This didn't happen at home.
Or or when they are in between fourth and fifth period when I'm with a different football team. Like, I I understand that and and I I do the best that I can as far as character uh, a- and and team devotions and and things that we do to try to build these kids' character, but at the end of the day, some of them, especially when I just get them in seventh grade, I have them for an hour and a half a day like an English teacher does. Is an English teacher responsible for them doing those, taking those pictures in the bathroom as well?
It is shocking. I've never heard a football coach say, I am not responsible for what my student athletes do when they're walking the halls between fourth and fifth grade, bu- fourth and fifth period. I can't believe.
That I'm I'm not saying that. I'm saying that
It is about.
While they're account, they're still accountable to me, absolutely, and we have a great football culture. Every year we grow in numbers. We have more than we ever have. If we had a locker room that had these things that that was painted, that happened all the time and it was daily abuse and 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 there's a picture that's been painted, ki- we wouldn't have the most kids we've ever had in our program wanting to join our program, wanting to be in that locker room.
And you've zeroed in on the commode pictures, but other than the commode picture and and potentially the teabagging incident, I don't know, I'd have to go back and review that student's statements. Everything else happened in the locker rooms. Orbeez guns, whips, being stuffed in the lockers, fighting with uh, boxing gloves, all that happened in the locker room. Who was responsible for ensuring that that stuff didn't occur?
Yes, I I was.
And the students whose interview I'm referencing said it was going on for years.
That that's, that's not true.
You said it was going on for years. You said it was going on for two years.
It was one incident that happened two years ago.
It's two years before May tenth, twenty twenty four.
That was one incident that was that was found, that was caught and handled.
Coach Mars, just let me underscore something that Mr. Wood is saying. Um, that we're trying to say that your players and your teams need to be the best examples of culture and manhood, not the worst examples of culture and manhood. So on that note, these examples are 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 important.
Yes, sir.
And the overall culture is very important because while the PLSB found that you didn't have prior knowledge of events occurring before May tenth, I find that extremely difficult to believe. But let's talk about after May tenth and the response to finding out about the horrible things that were occurring in, we'll call it that timeframe. We've already talked about several boys were convicted in juvenile court and placed on either six or one years probation. We disagree on what that was, but it doesn't really matter. Because you continued to allow some of, a- at least one, maybe more, of the boys that were convicted by the juvenile court and put on at least six months probation to be on the football team, did you not?
The ones that were responsible for the Orbeez gun were removed from the football team?
I don't wanna argue with you about which particular piece of conduct, who did what.
Yes, sir.
Because honestly, it's kind of hard to read redacted transcripts and trace who did what. But nonetheless, a a student who was convicted in juvenile court and placed on at least six months probation beginning in July twenty twenty four was allowed to be on the Quipman Junior High Football Team in fall of twenty twenty four, was he not?
In the fall of twenty twenty four, th- there were one, one on the junior high team, two, two on the junior high team.
With the victims of this bullying, right?
Yes.
So you allowed perpetrators to be on the same team with victims. And that, yeah, yes or no?
Yes, yes, sir.
And that was against school district policy, wasn't it?
No, sir. It was not.
It was. And hang on just a second. If everyone will bear with me, I apologize. I'm gonna pull up the page of the Quipman. Hang on just a second. I've got it written down here.
Why don't I open the floor and see if someone else wants to ask a question? You look that up.
While you're doing research, may I ask a fundamental question? Uh, that's not. Well, have there been more than one law firm representing you and the district in this? Was there a change of law firms from the beginning to now? Or are you still with the same firm?
I'm I'm, yes, sir, I'm with the, I've none that I, there's been no change that I know of before.
May I ask, is the district paying for your attorney fees?
Yes.
And to what price tag?
That I haven't been made aware of yet that I know. Um, I mean, with the 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 superintendent, uh, my boss, the 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 school board fully supported me and
Been shifting my funds from protecting children to, um, or educating children, I should say, to defending you. Thank you.
It's school district policy six, I I I call it school district policy. I don't exactly know. It was provided to us as Quipman. Uh, shoot, I don't know. Hang on. Gotta go back to the table of contents. It's provided to us under the title district policies. And it is policy six point one, point A, number eleven. And this is with regard to guidelines for participation in school slash extracurricular activities. Number eleven says, any student that is on court ordered probation, comma, in school suspension, comma, out of school suspension, comma, or assigned to alternative school for disciplinary reasons will not be allowed to participate in any extracurricular activities, comma, field trips, comma, or overnight activities.
Mr. Wood, may I address that?
Sure, please.
With respect to, um, the application of this particular policy, I was um, asked by the administration of the the Quipman School District to uh, look at this policy and and give some guidance regarding the interpretation of this policy. Um, and part of the advice that I, part of this back in, um, in the summer of twenty twenty four, I ca- I can't recall the 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 date, but it it, I do, I do know it was in the summer, last summer. Um, and part of the advice that I gave was that, um, six point one and six point one A um, have to be read, um, together. Uh, not only that, that, um, I I I I told the administration that every policy in this handbook um, has to be read in a manner in which they can be reconciled. Uh, sorta like statutory construction as as you and I both are aware. Um, you have to to read these policies in a manner in which they all make sense, right? So going to, uh, six point one, um, that that last line there and and I lifted this this line up in particular. Uh, says, a student's not meeting expectations for either or both, talking about academic or behavioral expectations, may lose uh, the privilege to participate for a specific period of time as determined by the principal, not by the football coach, but by the principal. Um, and then, um, it following that, there are the guidelines and and I think that one of the guidelines that 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 you're lifting up is, uh, six point one A eleven where it talks about, uh, those, um, students who are on court order, court ordered probations will not be allowed to participate in any extracurricular activities, field trips or overnight activities. Um, it 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 does say what it says. Um, but my advice to the district, uh, at that time was that um, six point one and six point one A had to be read in unison along with, uh, s- several other, uh, provisions in this handbook that gave the principal uh, discretion to deviate from, um, the, I I I guess the the discipline meted out for various, uh, infractions. Um, it gave the the administration discretion, A, whether they participate and if there's a decision that they didn't participate, um, the 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 timeframe that they were, that they were excluded from participation. Uh, and I and I think that that's what happened in this case. Um, and Mr. Mars can 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 talk more freely about that than I could.
Well, Mr. Eddings, I like you and you're a good lawyer. I do not agree that there is a inconsistency in the language between six point one and six point A eleven. Um, six point A eleven, if I if I'm citing it correct, six point one point A eleven says that those students described will not be allowed to participate. That that does not sound to me like there is any equivocation or room for a principal to decide otherwise. But nonetheless, the PLSB decided that there was a violation of school policy. And I agree with the PLSB. I just, I think we're here because I and maybe maybe others disagree with regard to the severity of the things that happened.
Well, I only, I only inserted myself into the conversation because uh, I thought that I could speak more directly to your questions than, uh, Coach Mars because Coach Mars was not involved in, um, in those discussions that I had with the administration regarding um, the interpretation of the policy.
That's fair, but he is the head football coach deciding who who's on the football team.
Absolutely, I understand that, but my point is, um, at the end of the day, I suspect what happened was that the administration relied on, um, the discussions that I had and conveyed that information to Coach Mars, which he then in turn relied on.
You didn't advise them that they had to let the perpetrator be on the football team, did you?
No, no, no. I I just, the only thing, I I didn't get involved in any the, I don't know who the individuals are. The only thing we talked about was what this policy meant and how that policy ought to be inter- interpreted, um, um, in particular, in relation to all other policies in the in the student handbook.
Okay, so at at worst, a- at best, the policy allowed discretion and at worst, the policy did not and said, he shouldn't have been on the football team. But at best, it allowed discretion and you chose to let the perpetrator be on the football team with the victim. In fact, you had to go so far as to create a special practice schedule for the victim and the perpetrator, correct?
The practice schedule, ye- yes, sir, because for the proba-
To accommodate it. Yeah, because you had a probation where the court had said that this perpetrator was not allowed to be around the victim. And so you set up a schedule that excluded the victim on certain days. He wasn't a, he under your schedule, he wasn't supposed to come to school and practice with the football team because you needed the perpetrator to get better at football and practice with the team. Is that right?
No, sir. Prior to the court case, which I had punished those involved for the fo- in in terms of my my punishment with football. A- and had removed those kids from to a separate locker room prior to that. Uh, just as I communicated with parents, that that they would be, they would be moved to a different locker room. Um, after that, with the order, like the protection order that was that was issued from the court, we set up a rotation where different people would come, because ju- junior high and senior high, without going into it, was on a on a different rotation schedule. So, yes, sir, while they were allowed, um, I I haven't kicked a kid off of the football team um, outside with with, uh, someone saying it from my, um, my 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 principal, my A D telling me that I had to. I do that because football's not the only thing that I teach these kids. A- and I, if I don't have a kid and 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 a couple of those kids, if they don't have football, they they might not, they might not come to school. They're they're definitely not gonna keep up with their grades and and allow, so so i- if they're doing something like this, while they are, they had a punishment through the school, we turn, we worked and and turned everything over that we had and they had their punishment through, uh, the 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 court system. Eh, even then, they were still punished from the team. They they were, they were not allowed to start. They were, they were put in this, they were, they did not have perks of the team, but they still were where I had access to them because oftentimes, a- and you guys know, they're in education, when this happens, there there's usually more to the story, whether it's it's self-esteem or confidence and and things like that, and it's things that as as a football coach, eh, who who is around them more than a lot of other, like, I wanna be able to find that and 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 fix that and and make sure that that doesn't happen again and that that they don't do that again and and that they can learn from that. Like that, a- and I know that you have this this picture painted of me that I'm not like that, but 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 I can promise you that I am. A- and anybody that knows me or is in my program will tell you that. A- and and I'm not saying and I'm not disingenuous to what happened. I I'm, I I'm, I'm mortified by it. A- and I've even talked with with parents up until they stopped communicating that a- and I tried, I mean, I I I I hugged their kids. I I apologize. A- and while it goes through with with a- at so many levels, because it is ultimately, as the head football coach, it is up to me and I'm not, I'm not pushing that away. There there I I, if I just kick a kid to the curb who has made some some terrible mistakes and terrible decisions, they never, they don't have a chance.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I I hear exactly what you're saying and, um, I've struggled myself as an educator, as a parent, with, um, when to, um, wrap a kid in your arms and when to bring about some really hard but appropriate consequences. Um, I think the reason you're standing here with us today is that the PLSB board, and I think you can see that members of this board agree that this was a time that a true consequence was necessary to to help these kids develop, that perhaps a consequence would have said more to them than you're on the team. My fear, and one of the reasons that this was pulled, is similarly, there's a stream, and I don't have a picture painted of you. I've only listened to you, I've read what was handed to me. Um, but there are some things that you've said that are concerning that perhaps this consequence, this probation, is not speaking to you in the same way that a lack of consequence didn't speak to those children. You mentioned that you have a great football culture. I think we all know that's, it it's not great, or we wouldn't be standing here, that there's more work to be done. You mentioned that when that one incident happened. You mentioned that when that one incident happened two years ago, it was just a singular incident. And that your locker room policies were great, that you tell the kids where to hang their helmets. But if that one incident occurred, that was your first red flag to say, ooh, I gotta look at the supervision, something is not right, there's more happening than we know about. And it's clear that didn't happen, that it was looked at as an isolated incident, to where it built and we're standing here now. When this came about, the locker room policies, it's clear, I don't think your comment that they're great tells me you have not taken a true look at them, a true introspective look at what you could have done differently to protect these kids. So I'm coming down to the conclusion that perhaps an elevated consequence might speak to you and your district and your principal, who I believe went against policy despite the interpretation of your lawyer, to say when there is a red flag, we have to stop and reflect and not ignore and move on and assume that won't happen again.
Ye- yes, ma'am, and and just to speak to that, when that did happen, changes were made. That was a period when we had uh, seventh grade only. And and then prior to this year was the first time that we had put seven, eight and nine all in the same period. So we we did, we did make changes. A a a lot of those changes as far as where they put their bags and stuff like that to keep things from from were were not feasible once we had seven, eight and nine and that and that timeframe, and they went from the afternoon to the morning uh, where they had already been at school to where like, you know, now they'd come in and staggered in with car riders. There's a twenty five minute window where kids were staggering in, depending on their bus routes and things like that with junior high. So I I do, I do take it very seriously. Um, I I can promise you that. Um, I I I have, I have, I didn't need the probation to to make me take a step back and 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 realize that when I say we had a great culture, I I'm not, I I'm not saying that it was perfect. I I I'm not, I'm not saying that there there are certain classes that are different and and there are areas that that need to be worked on. And when I found out about this on May tenth, like, I I started to work on that. But but no one had come to me or any of my assistants or even their parents prior to this to let that be known about this group of kids who the 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 core of it is is no longer in our program. A- and and to speak to the punishment that that I applied to them, they were still on the team where I had access to them, but but to not get the the gear to not be in the locker room, to have to dress at a different facility across camp, to a- and and that was something that was going to follow them all the way through high school, that was not something that I just put in for this one year. Like like, so so that I did put a very serious consequence to to take things away from them, to 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 try to encourage that change and then still allow me to have access to them as well.
When you um, separated the or staggered or or however the wording was for practices, um, which of the parties were in isolation and away from the team? Was it the um, perpetrators or the victims?
The perpetrators.
So it was my understanding that a separate away from the team practice was created isolating those that did no harm.
No, ma'am, that was an extra time that I stayed on days where they might miss. Uh, like as we had a rotation set in place and we'd, I'd gone over that. The anytime that wasn't offered to the perpetrators where if they missed the sprints and lifts and that practice, we we finish at ten o'clock, they could come in at ten once there was like a cut, and they could work with me and 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 their position coach and kind of and and never really have to miss and get that made up while we're following that protection.
Well, and my other concern with probation being the consequence here is um, while the matrix of each is probation or or, you know, the defined consequence, when you have a multitude of offenses, um, failure to report, failure to supervise, not following policy, you know, one after the other, at some point, the cumulative effect of that many should lead to a more severe consequence and that's um, sort of where I'm falling right now. Um, I'm just shocked that um, the string of decisions that were made that failed these kids.
Mister Brad, questions?
I've got a a question about the policy, the dressing room policy. It's stated that there's a policy that you would not be in the in the dressing room. Was that a written or is that just procedure that over the years it was developed or why was, what's the reasoning behind that?
Um, we had an issue with, I guess, a district down the road where a uh, a principal uh, was sitting in the locker room and um, was accused of looking at children while they change and shower. Um, and and we were just told that while that that was happening and and kids would be changing to not be like present at that moment.
Do you think that would change now? Or do you see a need for a change in that policy?
Well, I I think the way that we have made changes as far as the amount of kids that are in there a- and the and the waves that we send them and the time limits, um, and and cutting some of that time down and where we hold them before, so there's not as much staggering in, we always know how many kids are there and what kids are there. I I think uh, still allows uh, like assistant coaches to be protected or me from being in there and and still making sure that, you know, there's not a lot of clutter and noise in lockers, there there's fewer kids, so we are closely monitoring a fewer amount of kids in an area. And especially we know their locker number, where their lockers are, so you don't have a group of kids in a corner, it's more spread out, so um, I don't know, I I'm not, I don't get as far as the the school's policy changing on that. You know, I I I think we've we've made adjustments, but I I'm not in, you know, I don't, that wouldn't be my call.
There was also a question about the location of your office, what you could hear from the locker room. I mean, are you able to hear uh, a commotion or disturbances or?
Ye- yes, sir, the the door is 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 bolted open. Uh, but we also, we even with our office where we have, uh, we have a a team meeting room in between, also houses the locker room and our equipment room connects to that, so we always, I mean, even now, we have coaches there or even at the edge, like at the film room right there immediately on the door where they walk in.
But nobody heard anything about the incident that happened on May tenth?
How does your coaching staff look? Are you fully full or are you short on staff members to help, you know, oppose the situation?
Yeah, we uh, we have, we have a full staff, um, we have uh, four assistants um, that are on stipend and then um, one of our coaches, he drives a bus, so he comes in, you know, a little bit later. Uh, but for the most part, we have our our, the staff that we have is there, yes, sir.
Okay, as far as your staff, uh, did any of them hear of any of these instances as well?
No, sir, and they were, they were interviewed multiple times by all four DHS counties and and all the investigations that had been done and I mean, and even by me when we first found out about it and and no, no one knew anything.
Ms. Rollins?
So how many students are in the locker room then at any given time? What what is nor, I've not obviously been in a
Yes, ma'am, at at this time, um, like I said, they staggered in depending when their buses, you know, because some rode bus, some rode car or car riders, so they would get dropped off. So it would, it would vary depending on the times. Um, but if it, on the team, there were forty three, seven through twel- or seven through nine, seven, eight and nine. Um, so, I mean, at times I I would say there there probably could have been, you know, fifteen, fifteen to twenty, twenty five. Um, right about that seven thirty mark when several buses get there.
And there's no adult supervision then in the locker room?
Not inside the locker room, no, ma'am, like I said, we have coaches who, um, like one coach will be on the field as kids were going out. Um, you know, we would have uh, one coach in the the film room, the meeting room there and then you know, coaches, we we would take their laundry in and out, like push that to the door, so I mean, there's there's a, there's a moving, there's a moving rotation of coaches and then also the timer, letting them know how much time into practice to make sure we're out there and we would give whistles and ten minute, five minute calls for the kids who came in, so it was just, I mean, we had several coaches, I would say two to three in that film room.
Always in that area when students are there. Did that change after this incident?
Yes, ma'am, uh, we have uh, groups that go, we we, there there is no staggering, come in, they go straight to the film room, our meeting room and sit down, uh, and then we send them in waves and we start with the older kids and 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 work our way down and send them in waves and give them time, time limits. So, and it's a very short amount of time, so they will get in, get out, like I said, when when you have that many kids in a locker room with football pads and helmets, those lockers are metal, they slam, they're putting it, like, there there's a lot of noise. So just to make sure that, you know, e- even if it's something remotely low key, like that we have, uh, we have a coach right there at the door. Uh, it almost, like I said, there, I wish I had a diagram, but it goes in and kind of, you know, makes a little right intern and their kids right there. We have a coach right there before they go in, so um, you know, and we monitor with smaller groups.
Who helped you devise the plan after this incident?
Uh, Mister Sacks.
And who's that?
Uh, my athletic director and principal.
And principal? I think my concern is, I'm sitting here wondering, where is the principal, where's the superintendent? Where is the support for you and this team when all this has happened? Was there a new safety plan that occurred, what?
Are you talking about prior to finding out about this?
No, after it happened. After the May tenth, I'd like to hear where the support for you was.
To help you build the infrastructure of protection of kids.
Was was fully, fully involved in that as as far as creating the the waves and and identifying, you know, because he also helped me as we were interviewing the kids to even to find out, you know, when this occurred a- and then setting up the, putting all in the film room um, and and then sending them in waves, like, that was something me and Mister Sacks sat down and and we even, you know, again, were reached out to other schools a- and seeing some things, you know, tried to get ideas as far as as what what they did, larger schools as we're growing, you know, we've normally been in the low twenties in junior high and then you go to the forties. So 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 we've tried to reach out to some bigger schools a- as we grow and a- and try to find ideas to 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 make it more efficient and keep keep kids safe. And and make sure that, you know, that, again, this, something like this never happens.
What did you do before this job, before twenty ten, is it?
I I was in college, I I I
So this was your first job?
I worked at uh, I worked in Polack County Special School District until two thousand seventeen, from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen.
Were you a fu- football coach there as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Coach Mars, um, could you comment on the testimony that was shared that um, in your leadership toolkit would be retaliation or humiliation? Can you respond to those accusations?
Yeah, um, I I I never re- I never retaliated. Uh, the the allegations that that you're referring to that were in there, um, when I talked about the way that we sent kids, we did, we sent kids lab, like we sent kids in waves and I always started with ninth grade and worked our way down to seventh, that was just, um, it also helped them stagger because they go to breakfast after that. Um, so I I think there was one allegation that I I punished a kid by making sure that they were late. But we have had multiple instances where either practice might have went long or something, something could have happened and I emailed teachers, uh, I checked tardy reports uh, through our dean of students who runs those to make sure our kids are getting to class on time. Um, so that 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 just wasn't true, it was just the way that we started with. And then we did kids who took showers, because some didn't take showers, some would change clothes and roof, so we would try to send those kids in first so they're in and they're out. Um, you know, and then some of it had to do with the locker number that they were in, so we knew where they were in the locker room. Um, so so that, uh, as far as, uh, you know, we had one instance where there was a, there was a confusion with the schedule and um, you know, a kid showed up on a certain day. Um, so, you know, we didn't want them crossing paths, it was a senior high and a junior high who were uh, you know, on op- opposite ends of the schedule, but they would have been crossing paths at that time, so uh, you know, we had a a an issue there, but if anything, we offered more opportunities because anytime there was a missed day, they could always come after hours with me to, just to be able to to make up that one on one time where, number one, I could, I I could kind of talk to them and fill them out um, and make sure things were good and then let them sprint and let them get it, get their lift and 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 not really miss out. Whereas the perpetrators are obviously missing out.
And Miss Hennig?
Yeah, so I don't fully understand all of the logistical changes that you made, but it seems pretty um, involved and it sounds like a number of you thought it out. But my question is more around, did your messaging to your team change after this? And beyond that, did the messaging to the students as a whole? I mean, because this is, I'm sure, has tremendous ripple effect through the whole student body and into the community. So can you just talk about how that might have changed, how you encouraged students to talk to one another and treat one another?
Ye- yes, ma'am, and we 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 went through a lot of, this was also something that I, you know, even consulted with other other coaches and 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 did things, uh, even actually the best, one of the best ideas that I got was from a, from a parent. Um, you know, a- and and how we, we, you can have rules for this, if you do this, you're punished for this, but you know, really talking about from the other side of how it makes a kid feel who might, you know, who who might get bullied or even just their opportunity to lead those kids, and and since then, we started programs where we have kids that that we, they write down their goals and they're they're spiritual, they're personal, a- and then we pair them with a kid, an older kid and a younger kid together to talk about how they can support each other in that. That that was one thing that we adopted and and we're doing it right now this summer, to to try to connect that and make them feel closer to make, so um, you know, you, like I said, being at a at a smaller school, we do have some times where we have junior high and senior high uh, uh, together for some summer things, they're they're never all in the same location, but we bring them in and and try to connect that gap seven to twelve and let some of our older kids who are great kids, who do things right, who've been in the program and and understand a- and be an example to some of those younger kids because one of my fears was that since i- if this happened and I and I realized the risk of taking a kid who has committed these acts and allowing them to stay in the program, there is a risk that they will, could leave a mark on the program. So that was part of the reason for removing them from any positive activities, moving them from the, taking them from the weight room to where, you know, the time that they have is on the field and then with us. And try and and try to build that up and change it, so I want to make sure that it stopped with them and it wasn't something that repeated it a- and became a norm because that's a risk I realized that I was taking by letting these certain kids back into the program. I I I've I've fully realized that a- and I feel like me and my staff and along with the help of Mister Sacks have have done a good job of spending a lot more time and a lot more focus on that. I I even said, um, throughout in my last interview that, like, we're gonna, we're gonna shave ten to fifteen minutes off of practice every single day, not only to make sure that we can be more efficient in and out of the locker room, but to, but to also make sure that we can speak to these things and that they can hear not just me, but my assistant coaches a- and 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 even some kids who have already graduated, talk about the importance of just the the safety and how we treat and and the legacy that we leave and and I've tried to, I've probably, I I felt like I did that, but I I don't thi- I didn't do a great enough job, I I, you know, and and I feel like when I said I wasn't responsible for, I I did not mean it as I, I just can't, if I can't be there with them and with my eye and my thumb on them, like, there are going to be kids who 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 go astr- and and I always take responsibility for, and I and it hurts, I I lose a lot of sleep over these kids. Um, and if you think it's because I want to win football games, that's not it, I honestly, I ain't won that many football games. I haven't. Uh, I I I don't, I don't hang my hat on wins and losses, did I when I was younger, sure. But but my my biggest pride is i- is like, hopefully, a lot of coaches say i- is is that the kids become, and if I can take a kid who made some terrible decisions as a ninth grader and and in some way, that never happens again and and they can come back a- and walk down the sideline, or maybe they don't even play football anymore, but maybe they learned some lessons and they moved on and they come back with their wife and their kids and the job, like, like, I I know it's a coaching cliche, but but I honestly, that's that's where I'm at. My, I have a seventh grade son who's in that locker room. So like, I I under- I understand that you, where parents come from with that and and I don't ever want parents to not trust me with their kids. Um, a- and even through all of this, I felt like the changes that we made, some of the, of the pa- the kids who were vic- stayed in our program throughout, like, sta- stayed with us, a- and I took a little pride in that, that we're, we're gon- we're gonna do a good job to make sure this kid goes through and plays football and, and is safe and has a positive experience to where we can, again, this doesn't become the norm, but at the same time, this doesn't become something that even labels them, a- and, and, and I, and I, I mean, that's, tha- tha- that's, that's just, that's probably the biggest changes that, that we have tried to push to make.
So, I, I'm, just to follow on that, I mean, so, you, you, you thought in your judgment that it was a better messaging to the, the victims, the student body, the whole community to keep the perpetrators in the program and not have them suffer consequences.
They, they suffered consequences.
Well, but.
As far as, they, they, tha- not being, like I said, not being in the locker room, not having any benefits of the team other than practice and work. Well, I mean, like, one of the kids that, that, that came back, because so- some did not, they, they were not, tha- tha- they weren't, I mean, for the first several weeks, didn't play. Uh, they, there was, and, and, and talent, what, whatever, the message was sent to the team that if you don't want to have the gear that the team has and you don't want to have that, the, the locker room ability and the nice locker a- and the ability to compete for a spot to, to, to play, you're, meanwhile, the victims that were on the team played every single Thursday night and started. So, i- it wasn't, there wasn't punishment with playing time other than to the perpetrators, and that was, again, th- th- the, the benefits that you get from being from a team were taken away from them. They were on the team so that I could have access to them.
I'm gonna have to interrupt and, and let the record reflect that we have some shocked looks on some mothers' faces at your statement that the victims got to play every Thursday night.
They.
Well, there's at least a protest to that statement.
Well, we have, we have.
I don't know who's telling the truth.
From the games, we, I mean.
Well, it's not in the record, so I don't know that that's substantiated.
Their playtime should have never been at rest, so that's a moot point. Um, I think our point collectively, what we're trying to say is, my gosh, what would it have taken for any child to forfeit their own privilege to play this game? Because that's what happened, they made decisions and they gave up that right by policy, by a court order, and I am so sorry that your leadership failed you in their guidance, because they were telling you, we fully believe allowing those children to join on the field less than a quarter of a year after such appalling incidents occurred was not a strong enough consequence, and it sent the wrong message to those boys, to the victims, to the entire community, bottom line. Again, I don't know what it would have taken, otherwise.
I know Ms. Woods.
I just, I, I'll make a comment, and I may ask either Ms. James or the investigator if we could swear her in. This was a failure, but it was not all you. Unfortunately, you're the one here today that we have to talk about, but every level equipment has a responsibility in this. We have a matrix here that we go through, I understand where probation came from because the failure to report, all of the district policy failures, those are all in the probation category. But on our back page, we have the potential mitigating and aggravating factors that we have to consider. And in the aggravating side, we have to consider, was there severe, was there a moderate to severe level of negative impact on students? Yes. We had a whole law created around locker rooms because of this incident. We had mothers who stood here in November and sat through our entire day's worth of meetings that did not apply to them so that they could have three minutes to get nine people's attention, because nobody at their school was paying attention. We're having to talk about, is there evidence of prior similar behavior? I believe Mr. Wood confirmed there was. Did the actions constitute child maltreatment? No. Was a criminal offense involved? Yes. Did it have a severe impact on community? Yes. Did it have a severe level of impact on the district funds? Not necessarily. Was there multiple violations and did they occur over a period of years? The majority of these aggravating factors are yes, and so we have to sit here and struggle with, is probation two years, five years, ten years, I don't know, appropriate? And so that's my comment, I just want you to understand where we're sitting here is not to just rail on you and say you're a terrible person and you did a bad job. But we have been appointed to this board to uphold standards, and for somebody who's been teaching since two thousand and ten in coaching, I would have assumed there would have been a different outcome, because to Ms. Keener's point, what did a kid have to do for you to be like, you're not on the team this year? You will come to practice, you will sit here and you will learn something from that. So that's my comment. I, oh, I was gonna ask Ms. James, could we talk to the investigator or is there a way that we can get an assessment of like, why they landed on probation and didn't escalate it? I don't know who's the appropriate person to ask that.
Everything that the ethics subcommittee considered is spelled out in the rationale.
In the rationale?
Yes, ma'am, you probably knew I was going to say that.
Yes, I did.
Yes, ma'am, our job is just to put everything together and we did have a quorum that day, we had all five members of our, well, we always have a quorum, but we had a full, uh, subcommittee that day that, that reviewed this, and spent quite a bit of time, of course, you're free to do whatever, uh, you feel is, is best, um, but yes, ma'am, all of the mitigators and aggravators are spelled out in, in the rationale, yes, ma'am.
Ma'am.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, do they ever typically go above the matrix?
If there are enough aggravating factors, they do, I will tell you, we have never had a case, all cases are different. We've never had a case with, that, since I've been with the PLSB that is this exact fact scenario, and I think the reason that they went with probation because, it was because of all of the mitigators, so they were kind of balancing, balancing that out, but everything is in the rationale, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. James, do you mind to say, I think there might be other questions?
Sure.
I have some of you, Ms. Keener.
Yeah, I just had one quick question, I understand, um, as we dig into these cases and digging into the PLSB process and that kind of thing, um, the members of the subcommittee were, was it the people that are, were appointed or was it their proxies? Because they are allowed to name a proxy, correct?
It, the members of the ethics subcommittee are all members of our full board, which are approved by the state board. Does that make sense? I'm not under, I, I don't understand the proxy question.
Well, yeah, I guess that, and I may be.
Well, and I'll jump in.
Yeah.
Is there, so this case only went through the one process?
Ethics subcommittee, those are all full board members, yes, ma'am.
So to go, so sometimes you go through two processes.
Yes, ma'am.
The second process is called.
The evidentiary hearing.
Evidentiary hearing, that did not occur.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That did not.
I thought I understood.
Yeah, okay, that did not occur here.
No, ma'am.
What triggers evidentiary hearing?
The educator would have to request an evidentiary hearing, and in this case, he accepted the recommended sanction, so we went straight to consent.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's that, when you have the full board and five individuals, is it just the five individuals who are most available at that time?
No, ma'am, it is a group of five that the full board, uh, elects. We have to have two administrators, two classroom teachers, and one from some other representation, which we have a dean of a higher education, uh, program.
Okay.
Yes.
The sanctioning guidelines, those are not law, correct?
They are promulgated as part of the rules, yes, ma'am.
So they're part of the rules that we approved at some point in time, but they're not in law?
They would have the same effect, because they're part of the rules, however, they are guidelines.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, does anyone else on the board have questions of Ms. James or Ms. Banker, the investigator? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, other questions or comments at this point in time?
I, I do have some more that I'd like to bring up. Um, specifically in, a little while ago, you said that the investigation that was done by the attorney hired by the school district to investigate all of this did not find anything with regard to anyone actually shooting the Orby guns, but her report says that student C said there had been players holding others down, humping them, hitting them in the legs with a whip, and shooting gel blasters at them. That's according to her report, that she found that student C said that he had been shot with the Orby gun. I also am frustrated at your response, not just, not just the culture that existed prior to May tenth, not just the response with regard to these victims and these perpetrators in the wake of May tenth, but then when the moms came here to complain, because in their opinion, they were not heard by the local school district, your response to that was to sue the moms for defamation. And I find that entirely inappropriate for moms to come here and, and explain all of the bad things that happened. And you might disagree with this or that, or you might say that this one thing was slightly embellished, or this or that. But I believe that there are other instances, as the record alludes to, and I don't have the specific page number, but the record alludes to other parents that did not want to come forward and tell the story of what was happening to their kids' equipment. And I believe that this lawsuit against the moms, which you've now dismissed, you got a warning from the judge that this case was in trouble and you voluntarily dismissed it, but with the right to refile it against them later. Um, I believe that this was an effort to make sure that everybody else kept their mouth shut. Don't come forward and talk about these things, I'll sue you too. I think that the culture in this football program was, has been terrible for years and is really bad even in the wake of some very heinous things coming to light, and M- Mr. Mars, I, I, I personally can, cannot imagine how we would continue to allow you to be a teacher in, in Arkansas public school, given this record in front of us that has been going on for years and what has happened since then. I am just one of nine, um, but I, I would support a revocation of the license based on what we have in front of us.
Board members, questions of either party, additional comments to the right? To the left?
I've struggled with this too, I mean, I've, I've read all the information, um, there've been extensive investigations. I kind of look at it almost like a, a replay of umpire calling somebody out at first base, other coach objects, wants a replay. There has to be a, a good bit of evidence to overturn the original call, and I, I, to me, the PLSB has done investigation, outside investigations, internal investigations, I know this is an extremely emotional issue, something bad happened, there were some fall downs in the system. But I, I, I don't know that, uh, a revocation, revocation of, of a license is, is necessarily justified. I, I don't know if probation is, is enough, but I don't know that anything past that is gonna make Mr. Mars a better coach or a better person. I just don't know that ending a, a career, what, what happened, because there's other people involved, uh, there's some institutional issues, I think. Part of it was the policy to me about the locker room, you know, not being visited, uh, you know, I think that's a fall down. Uh, and you, you have accepted responsibility, there were steps taken, uh, you know, to address the individuals. Uh, there could be some disagreement on, on how severe those steps were, but, uh, I, I just don't know that revocation of licenses is, uh, justified in this, this instance.
Ms. Hennig.
So, yeah, Mr. Burke, I would agree with you, I'm not sure that revocation is the answer here. I think that there is, to Ms. Woods' point, there is a failure kind of up and down the ranks here, and it's not all on you. Um, in the same way that you went through the mitigating factors, um, you know, there are, I'm, I'm sorry, the aggravating factors, you know, I'm reading back through the mitigating factors, and there are few, if any, mitigating factors, so I'm, you know, I'm not sure, um, you know, how the conclusion of probation came, any, but there is middle ground between revocation and probation, and that is suspension. So, um, I think that is, that's what it is kind of going through my mind right now. You know, I would encourage, you know, the rest of my colleagues here to, you know, think about that and, you know, what would be an appropriate timeframe. Uh, but I, I do think that there is, um, I think the most important message here is the failure up and down, uh, up and down the ranks in that, in that school district.
Yeah, I'd like to underscore that, as a former school superintendent, you know, I just have to cast out images in my head of how all this looked, but truly, there's dysfunction in the district, whether it's superintendent, principal, athletic director, coaching staff. I mean, there's just this us-them mentality and, uh, circle the wagons, rely on the passage of time, downplay, uh, color the story, it's just not full extreme ownership, and I think those two words alone in the be- from the beginning, I know what the attorney said, that you're willing to take responsibility, but it's been muted quite a bit by the pushback or the, 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 uh, um, opposing arguments, that I don't think there is extreme ownership, and that's what I think we'd like to get the district's attention to say, not making you the scapegoat necessarily because of their, um, involvement in this as well, but to say, hey, everybody, wake up, this isn't how you do school, this isn't how you do football. I, I, I was amused by the fact that you even said, well, when the kid's at school, it's not my job. Well, the field house is part of the school, I've been always fighting this with coaches, to say, you know, you're not a silo, you're not independent of the school, you are the school, and you need to be leading the school, and so this, uh, compartmentalization wasn't in your favor as well, so I know you've been scolded enough, but man, this is a bad situation that could have been repaired or made not so bad a lot sooner.
Board members, I'm, I'm gonna ask Ms. James to come up, thank you. And can you walk us through, we've done this before, but there's three different motions to make sure board members remember what this looks like?
There, there should be three motions, the first one is, uh, whether there was a violation of the code of ethics and which standards are part of the motion. The second one is the sanction, uh, whether the state board wants to uphold the recommendation or modify it, and if so, what that will be. Um, just a reminder that with suspension, if that's the way you choose to go, there typically with PLSB, there's a probationary period following that, but I would like to proceed. The third motion is the rationale. Uh, the ethics subcommittee has a very detailed rationale, if you want to adopt that and remove some things or add some things, that might be the best way to, to handle that, uh, but those are the three motions.
Thank you. Board members, as you think about that, and any additional questions or comments that come to mind, anyone?
Well, I mean, I'll move to motion that there was a violation of the code of ethics. We can get that per.
Which, which standards, the?
One, two, and three, sorry.
Number seven was also listed by PLSB.
Uh, yes, all, all of those, yes, thank you.
They actually found not a preponderance on that one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Right, because it was one, it was one A, one B, one A was confirmed, two A was confirmed, and two B, and then three A, and then seven was not. So, I'm gonna move to find that the code of ethics was violated as to standards one A, two A, two B, and three A.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Woods that there is a violation of the code of ethics, is there a second to that?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Motion number two is in regard to the sanction, any questions or comments before that are welcome though, too. Any questions or comments before that are welcome though, too.
I just wanna make sure, so we have probation, a written reprimand, suspension, and then, and revocation. Are the four possibilities?
Yes, ma'am, and with, uh, with the sanction, the ethics subcommittee recommended a number of quarterly reports with reflections and training. So if, when you're making the motion, you would include that and the fine, that really doesn't, gets lost.
Sure.
I have a, I have a question. Is it, is it possible to... I, I'm not even, I, I don't even know where I am on this issue. I, I, I really struggle with this, but is it possible to simply take away his ability to be a coach? But allow him to continue to be a teacher?
Yes, sir. All of this time.
With, um, I have a question for you as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Suppose we, um, with probation, to whom is he accountable? So who could say he violated the probation? Who could say he crossed a line out prior to it ever coming to PLSB? If, well, the, the probation is actually enforced and monitored by us. So it wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything that the district, the district would have to provide the quarterly reports to you, and you would have to accept those. And he would remain on probation until every single piece is met and all of the reports have been approved. If there were anything else filed, then the ethics subcommittee can and likely would increase the sanction if anything else occurred.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I hope that answers your question.
So in other words, per quarter, we can gauge whether there's increased ownership of this culture building?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, probation falls off of a license publicly, right, after it's completed?
It will be public in A Ls and it will be on the website.
Forever on his license, or just until it's complete?
Until it's completed, we don't leave a probation forever.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
For example, a law license, if you have a proba, it's like on there for people to see forever. So that, that's what I'm asking, so does a written reprimand stay on there?
A written reprimand is not in A Ls, and that would come down from the website eventually. Uh, revocations stay on...
Okay.
Yes. We, we, you should be able to look at someone's license and A Ls and tell if they're in good standing or what the current, yes, ma'am. We would have, of course, in our office and in the department, we would be able to tell how many violations someone has had and see the history all the way back. So we do keep that internally, but publicly...
I'm just thinking, like a future employer, if they were to go up and see in five years, probation's fallen off, they would never see anything, right?
If the probation has, but I believe a lot of employers will ask if you've ever had an ethics violation.
Oh, really?
And he wouldn't be able to answer truthfully, no.
Board members, anyone else with a question? Or comments? Ms. James, and just to be clear, the current recommendation is two years probation, and it does require a supervisor to give a report and the educator.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And those reports come to the board?
Because this came to a full hearing, they would have to come back to the board.
Okay, I actually didn't realize that. So it's when our board has heard it is when the reports come to us. If it stays at the PLSB level, we don't see their reflections?
Our ethics subcommittee would approve those, yes, ma'am, it really depends on who orders them.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you for that clarification. Board members, any other questions?
I, I gotta be honest, the quarterly reports from the supervisor is laughable considering we also have lumped them in as the part of the problem. So I'm just gonna point that out.
I'll, I'll make a motion just to have something concrete to talk about on the table. Um, because otherwise, we just sit here and wait on someone else to talk and whatever. Um, and I, I hear other board members, and I, I try to be reasonable. I'm, I'm gonna, uh, move that his license be suspended for one year. And, and no fine.
Followed by probation.
Yes, followed by a two-year probation after the one-year suspension.
Would you also like the recommended trainings, quarterly reports, written reflections, all of those items?
Trainings, yes, quarterly reports, I, sure, yes.
Okay.
Might as well, we can laugh at them if we find them laughable, but nonetheless, we can receive.
Would you like the fine as well? You may have already said that.
I don't, I, I'm not a fan of fines.
Okay, board members, so is that your motion?
That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
Are you still wanting the supervisor reports?
Yes.
You are, okay. Perhaps that supervisor changes. I'm sure, an unnamed direct supervisor. I'll second it.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Keener, so there's a motion by Mr. Wood, a second by Ms. Keener. And could you restate the motion, Mr. Wood? Just so we have it on record.
Yes. A one-year suspension of his license, two years probation following the suspension, and quarterly report, quarterly reports from Mr. Mars during his probation and training.
All the recommended trainings and reading from the...
Gotcha.
And no fine.
Okay, the motion's on the floor, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. All right, last motion is a motion for the rationale for the decision.
Yes, ma'am.
The board may accept the rationale or modify the one presented by the PLSB.
I'll make a motion and correct me if I get it wrong.
Okay.
Correct me when I get it wrong. Um, I move that we accept the rationale and add the lack of mitigating factors and that the board find, finds a preponderance of evidence of several aggravating factors. How's that?
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Keener with the rationale. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Woods, any questions? Or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, thank you.
Okay.
And I do wanna say my appreciation to you and to the PLSB board. This is the worst part of the job, so I cannot imagine being on that board and doing it all the time. So I appreciate your work and your, the due diligence of all the stuff we had to read, so thank you.
I will tell you, Sarah Banker worked very hard on this case, and she's, she does a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I actually, I'm gonna take a point of privilege to make a comment. It came to my attention this week that House Bill nineteen forty-one passed during the session. I was not aware of it when it was going through the session. And that bill takes away the right for the state board to hear PLSB cases. So PLSB cases will no longer come in front of the state board. I, um, in reflecting on my seven years in this job, I, 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 it is very difficult to be in front of educators. It's very difficult to have these hearings. Um, things happen unfortunately, but I think it's our job as a board to have a high standard for all individuals in front of our educators. So I was disappointed that this law went through because our board is the one consistent body over the years that have seen cases. We are the only one where the same group of people are seeing the consequences, the sanctions that are going out to individuals. If you go, if I pulled up my law book this week, the state board has a list of powers and duties, and one of our powers and duties is to provide license to teachers. We, you know, push that power to the agency, but at the end of the day, it is our duty to provide general supervision of public schools, including issuing licenses. And so I was very disappointed that this law went through without any discourse to our board. I know we've had many conversations over my seven years up here about how do we best glean information from PLSB, how do we work with each other, maybe some changes along the way. Um, I've not seen those changes, and now here we are with that being gone. So I will be gone, but I hope that we all as a body continue to push for high expectations for all individuals. We have thirty thousand amazing teachers, we have amazing people who make mistakes and things happen. Um, but that, this process, while it's very draining of us, I know we've talked about having separate meetings for these, that would have been beneficial as opposed to just taking it away. But this process is important, that it's transparent, people are accountable for actions, whether mistakes or not. And doing that in front of a public body is important and not behind a closed door at a PLSB case. Certainly, there are things that should be stayed behind closed doors. We could have revamped our state board procedures to do that instead of just taking it away. But that, that's my final words on this. I will encourage you all to work with the agency and the PLSB to see if any, anything else can be done before this just goes all behind the closed door. And in the future, my, my understanding is if I'm a complainant, I won't know what occurs until it's on that individual's license. And so perhaps as y'all think about putting rules to this, you can think about that perspective too as to how we continue again to hold and communicate high expectations for individuals.
I have a follow-up question without, given the shift, um, after today, these things are available, Freedom of Information Act, correct, to anybody that, um, requests them? Um, given the new law, is that still going to be true? Will there still be transparency to the public?
I may have to have some support from legal on this, please.
We've put our hands together, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the answer to that question. Of course, the law doesn't come into effect till August, I, so we will get back to the, the answer.
Okay.
I can probably look it up here while you're on your lunch break.
Well, and here's another procedure question that I'm just showing that you can write here, but I understand the law goes into effect in August, but oftentimes the rules have to be written and approved and gone through the process first. Is that the case here as well? Like, will the rules for this law come to us for release for public comment, all that?
Yes, all rules come to you regardless of, of, uh...
Prior to the law going into effect? Yeah, help us, help me on the timeline, I don't know about...
The rules will come to you, but that does not delay implementation of the law. So when the law goes into effect on August fifth, that is the law.
Okay.
With that, let's go ahead and conclude our action agenda and go to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have a number of issues. Um, are there any consent agenda items that board members would like to discuss or pull? I will note that we had a number of revocations.
Yep.
And, you know, we have thirty thousand amazing teachers in the state, or whatever the number is. And unfortunately, I think we had five revocations this month. If you look at it, there's really only a hundred and fifty to two hundred so cases that our board generally hears over the years. So we're talking a very small number of, of individuals that have, have done things that require sanctions. Um, and it, and it does take up more of our time, but again, I will argue that it is necessary so that we know that our students are being protected in this state. Um, but I did see in these cases, I think the PLSB hopefully heard our messaging loud and clear as to what, what, what actions can be allowed, and they went ahead and did revocation when in years past, they might not have done that, or I've seen them not do that. Um, with that, board members, any items want to be pulled to ask questions or discuss?
Do you need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Actually, I have a question, but I'm looking, I'm sorry. That's what I usually do, let's be honest. Okay, item number five, it is from the charter authorizing panel, the Arkansas Virtual Academy. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I know there's been a lot of conversation, again, about high expectations for schools. So I was surprised that the charter authorizing panel did expand a school that has unfortunately low letter grades in years past.
In years past, that is correct.
I believe in years past, they've had D and F letter grades. I don't know much about the school, this is not a personal thing, it's just a, was there a conversation about that standard setting and what that looks like to allow a school to grow?
Yes, ma'am, there was quite a bit, quite a bit of discussion at that point. Uh, to your point, they have in the past have very low grades. With the new letter grade system, the new accountability system, all their schools actually raised up a letter grade. So they were actually Cs and a B. And I think they still had a D. So we saw, we saw a great improvement in the school functioning as a whole, as well as no, more and more students, uh, participating in that program.
Okay.
So...
Good, thank you. Okay, sorry, if board members, any other questions on, okay, then the floor will be a motion. The floor will be open for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Uh, motion by Ms. Hunter to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bragg, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. With that, do you wanna take a break? What do you wanna do? What do y'all, do y'all wanna take a break? Do lunch, take a five-minute break and knock out reports? What's the will of the board?
Five-minute break? Finish.
Finish? Okay, let's do that. Let's, let's, can we do a break? Let's do five minutes and then we'll finish, if that's okay? I, use restroom.
Not a lunch break.
Not a lunch break.
Not a lunch break.
Not a lunch break.
Items on the state website for the ACT ASPIR assessment. The department had at least two summative alignment studies. And only certain educators had the opportunity to view the ACT ASPIR assessment. From two thousand fifteen until twenty twenty-three. The test bank for ACT ASPIR was not given to to prepare a formative assessment. Teachers never saw release items for ACT ASPIR assessment. But yet, the data from two thousand fifteen until twenty twenty-three was used to justify the need for the Atlas Summitive Assessment and Learns legislation. It was very disheartening in January twenty twenty-five. In the Arkansas Department Gazette, published that one hundred and seventy-four schools in the state were awarded nearly seven million dollars for scores and academic growth on their Atlas Assessment in twenty twenty-four. And so we say, in closing, we are requesting that the Accountability Department post-release Atlas Summitive Assessment. They were using the Atlas Summitive Alignment Studies on the state district website to allow equal access to all teachers to prepare for all students for their Atlas Summitive Assessment. All students for their success. And their district will have an equal opportunity to receive state awards for their scores and academic growth. Thank you for allowing me to have public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Charlene Wright?
Good afternoon, and I am glad to be back. Good afternoon, Arkansas State Board Members, Secretary Oliva, Chairperson Dr. Moore, and all others. Thank you for allowing me to make comments, which is a continuation of an injustice that the Pine Bluff School District suffered in September twenty twenty-three. Our district was denied an election of all seven board members. In July of twenty twenty-five, Board Member Jeff Woods made remarks that he felt that you should have an emergency meeting and allow the Pine Bluff School District a single election of all seven board members. Dr. Moore made the remark that it would only take three. No motion was made, and again, in November twenty twenty-four, our district was denied the opportunity of a single election of all seven board members, when a local school district elected three. And our district was given the opportunity of one, and Appointed Limited Board Member ran unopposed due to her initial appointment, when the Limited Board Member resigned. Recent twenty twenty-five legislation, House Bill eighty-nine, Senate Bill ninety, as well as Senate Bill seventeen twenty-four, addresses that an entire school board of directors is required to be elected during the first school board election after a school district returns from state to local control, affirming the Act six-three-three that Helena West Helena, Palaske County Special, and Little Rock School District elected all seven board of directors in a single election. But yet, Pine Bluff School District was denied an election of all seven, stating continuity despite the law requiring a democratically elected board. In May of twenty twenty-five, at the Pine Bluff School Board's meeting, it was made known the intentions of the Appointed Limited Board, and the superintendent is to have an election of four board members in the spring of twenty twenty-six. Again, we are asking that you have an emergency board meeting to correct this miscarriage of justice that has been placed on the Pine Bluff School District to allow the Pine Bluff School District an election of all seven board members, according to Act six-three-three and Senate Bill seventeen twenty-four in the spring of twenty twenty-six. Again, an election of all seven board members in the spring of twenty twenty-six. We thank you for allowing me to have comments as a Pine Bluff School District stakeholder and a former member of the Education Committee of the Pine Bluff Unit of the NAACP. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but all were given a single election. And then, like I spoke to one of the board members, I know that we sounded like a broken record, but when I heard about the recent legislation, it confirmed what we've been seeing since twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Please have an emergency board member meeting to correct this injustice of the Pine Bluff School District.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. I believe that was all signed up for public comment today. Thank you. We will move on to reports. Any board members have anything they want to report this month?
I have one exciting thing. We implemented a grant in early childhood. Within twenty-four hours, I had over three hundred emails in my inbox of excited people. Last I looked at was at twelve hundred. That's why if you emailed me in the last month, I probably didn't see it. Apologies. I did figure out how to pin Ms. Mary's to the top, so hers come to the top. So if you need something, maybe go through her. We're super excited about that. And the process by which we're going through is so in line with the Learns Act and all the goals we're moving forward. It's going to go through the local leads first, and their plans that they developed with their community in line with the law. Those that meet those criteria based on improving their access quality and workforce will then come to the subcommittee, and we're excited to look at them today and see what falls in line with that plan. And then it'll go to people with, that are a lot smarter than me, and make sure that they're in line with all the federal and state requirements and all that. So we're pumped. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Can I just say one thing? I had a great conversation with the principal at Harmony Grove High School in Camden, Jeff Mock, following our last board meeting. I, you know, publicly, I don't think there's any question that ever now and then we are tough on alternative calendar schools. He called me to describe what they do at Harmony Grove, which was actually pretty impressive. They do it to exceed the minimum number of days and hours that are required of school districts. He described the way they use the flex days to do extra intervention in the areas that students need extra focus. And it was just really, it was a momentary breath of fresh air with regard to a school district using the alternative calendar that they do to improve, you know, student focus, go above and beyond. And I say it publicly just to thank him for the phone call, but then also to recommend to the department to contact Harmony Grove and talk to them about what they're doing. And I was impressed.
That's great. I think the word out there is that our board has a very high expectations in everything. And I would hope that even more superintendents would be happy to share when they are exceeding what should be done and going above and beyond for students.
Board members, before Ms. McCaslin, Mr. McCaslin goes? And now, is this your last board report?
It is, especially if I break this mic. Yes, it is my last one. And Jeannie, the incoming twenty twenty-five Teacher of the Year is here with us. But I was speaking with her earlier, and a few of you, Ken, I told you, it's a unique position and one of those positions that just as you kind of get in a feel that, okay, I understand what I'm supposed to be doing and how I'm supposed to be doing, and then you see the finish line. And so it moves super fast, but it's such a blessing to have this past year. And that's kind of what I decided for my June report is just kind of look back over, not just this past year, because it is a long process. I was announced in October twenty twenty-three. And I love the way Arkansas does it, though, because it is a long process, but it's a process that not only prepares the Teacher of the Year, but also the district of how they're going to handle that next year. And just a really cool, cool thing to look back on. And we'll start with October twenty twenty-three. I've told this story before, I'll give you the quick version this time, is we're all gathered up in the studio because we've been told that a school's going to come by, and they want to watch us work. And so we're getting ready to put our show together, produce our live show. And our kids are anxious, wondering why they're late, or the other school's late. And they keep asking me that. I say, I don't know. And then all of a sudden, here comes Governor Sanders and Secretary Oliva with a mob of press behind them. And it was just really, really cool. A little bit different than they've done in the past, because it had always been a big school rally. This made it even more special because it was so intimate with my students. They're the ones that I'm even in this position to begin with. And then, and then my students were able to go on to produce a newscast right there for the governor and the secretary as well. And then, fast forward, CTE Day at the Capitol. That was in February, the following year. I'm still teaching right now, but, or at this moment, but we still got to come up here to Little Rock. And it was really one of my last big events I got to do with my students as a teacher during that year. But funny story there is you see Kinley there with the microphone interviewing Governor Sanders. She out of nowhere just comes up to me, grabs a mic, says, I'm going to interview the governor. We're like, hold on. But you see who's running the camera there? And funny tidbit there, we get back to the Queen. That next day, Riley's in there editing. She's like, Coach, there's no audio for the governor. I'm like, well, who was shooting? She's like, Secretary Oliva. And of course, I answered like I should have. I said, well, obviously, you didn't coach him up enough. So whose fault is it? Is it his fault or is it your fault? But fun day there. Then just looking back on the CCSSO experiences, just a magnificent event. Jeannie got to experience Google out there at San Francisco just this last month. And I was explaining to her what grows out of those opportunities is the relationships that you form within your cohort. And then you're going to form relationships in your mini cohort, within your cohort. And I've got six teachers from across the country that I talk to on a daily basis, just within a group text. And of course, it'll get serious, but it's also, you know, fun. You get to vent a little bit. But it's, the way the network works is, a lot of times, they might not be able to help you, but the people within their network, they're going to go find answers for you. And really excited for Jeannie to be able to look forward to that. Amazing experience. Space Camp's coming up next month for her. Space, out of all those, Space Camp was one of our most favorite, because the teachers really got to be kids again. Although the College Football National Championship. And then Washington Week was great. The White House State Dinner, which we'll look at here in a second. But Senator Bozeman, shout out to our congressional leaders, because they're always willing to meet with our Teachers of the Year. And that's not the case in every state. And Senator Bozeman gave me thirty minutes just one-on-one. And this is the first time I've met Senator Bozeman. So I sit down, and I start trying to tell him who I am and tell him my story, our story at DQTV. And he kind of redirects the conversation very quickly. And he wants to talk about the Razorbacks. I go with it, but in the back of my mind, I'm like, all right, he must not really care about what we're doing back there. You know, the doubt is in there. But at the end of the conversation, he says, well, come over here. I want to show you something and tell you something. And that is a, he read my name into the congressional record and our story into the congressional record the day before. Everything that I was prepared to tell him about me and our program, he had just told the halls of the Senate, the halls of Congress, and read on the Senate floors the day before. So really, a special moment. Capri will understand what I'm talking about there, because he did the same thing for her. And just shout out to Senator Bozeman. I felt horrible for thinking that he might doubt caring about me. He reaffirmed it by the end of that meeting, which was just a great, a great day. And I'm trying not to turn the slideshow off there. And then at the end of that week, to be able to go with two of my students into the White House, this wasn't just a tour of the White House. This was a four-hour state dinner at the White House. And I mean, it was already going to be special to be able to take my wife and then to be able to take Ashley Deontay. Just a really, really neat moment. And then, my tour here starts. July first, or the first meeting as a member of the state board was in July. Very special day. Capri gave me a little emblem to put on my, I don't have it today, Capri. I'm sorry, but I know where it's at. But I put that in there just as an opportunity to say thank you to you all, because it puts Teacher of the Year in Arkansas, puts them at the table. And it's easy said, it's a lot harder done. This is one place where we are at the table, but we're also heard and we're listened to. And you guys have asked my opinions. And it's a really special, special treat for Arkansas. And Capri and I have mentioned before, Arkansas has one of the best Teacher of the Year programs, because that is not, is not the case in a lot of big states. But a really special moment. But also, what it does is, a lot of times, there's a disconnect from the classroom to the board on a district level, and then from the classroom to the boardroom on the state level. And it's been such a learning experience for me as a teacher. And I wish all teachers could see what I have learned on this journey, which is not just here on the board, but everybody here at DESI, all the trips I've made across the state. Everywhere, there are people so committed and to making learning better for students across the state. And to see the depth of work that you guys put into your positions up here and your commitment to improving learning across the state is really special. I wish all teachers could experience what I've experienced over the last year being on this board. And then the speaking tour starts, and Arkansas does it in a funny way, too. Your very first keynote speech is a speech at the governor's mansion. So there's no working into it, but the good thing about that is they're all, none of them are as hard as that one to follow up. If you can handle the governor's mansion, you can handle all of them. And then Jeannie's special day, okay, it was October of last year. And just being able to be on the opposite side of that and to be able to surprise her was awesome. To see how much those kids love her was really cool. And the really, one of the coolest parts for me about that whole process was watching Jeannie teach in her classroom. Because it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, all the smoke and mirrors. It was what she does every day. And you could tell by the reactions in her students, so excited for her to be following in my footsteps. She's a teacher. She's a hard-nosed teacher. She's a lot better teacher than I am. And it's like, what I was telling her, I was like, you'll make this position, everybody makes it their own. And all Jeannie needs to be is Jeannie and the teacher that she is. So I'm looking forward to that. You'll see the picture on the right. We did the Gator Talk. I believe the secretary has told this story. You see the big laugh from the governor there? That is about the time that I'm telling her, I don't know how much good this is doing for your reelection process. But really, really a fun day there. And then McGee, put McGee in there, because McGee, this was the Blue Ribbon Day at McGee Elementary. McGee Elementary is a school that is facing the same challenges that so many of our rural schools across the state face. But they're a perfect example of what you can overcome when you look at challenges as obstacles, not barriers. And then you look within yourself, within your community, for your own solutions. McGee is one of several schools and communities I went to over this past year that faced those same challenges. What was the same about all of those places I stopped were the challenges might look a little different, but the solutions to overcoming those challenges were the same. There are schools and districts that their walls weren't a separator. They had opened their walls and their classrooms to parents, to the community, to community leaders, to industry. It's where all the stakeholders are involved in the learning process. And I, I believe that belief is growing through the state. I think it needs to speed up in places, but hopefully, it's what we're all working towards across the state. I'm trying to skip forward. There we go. And delay. Can you back up just a few? Kim? Put a map up there just to show you. I went all across the trade. I tried to hit all of the regions the best I could. But just like I said, everywhere I went, some of those schools are facing the same challenges. The solutions all looked very similar, though. I don't know if there's a delay on that. Can you advance it one? There we go. We'll go closing talks. No, seriously, PSL, the PSL tour has been awesome. I have one more module to go to at the end of this month, which is in June. And just some closing thoughts for me is, you know, this past year has forced me to look a little deeper in my own educational journey, as far as my journey into teaching and how I got there. Part of that digging deeper made me realize that my path into education and a teacher actually started back in nineteen seventy-seven with my mother and her senior year. And that's when she found out that I would be coming along. But luckily for her, luckily for me, she had enough people in her life and teachers in her life and family in her life that didn't let her think that that could be a detour from chasing the dreams that she had and family support system. And there's a lot more to that story that I'm going to share in July at the ADE Summit. I'll be the keynote speaker there. And that's just the start of the first chapter. Hopefully, you can be there and enjoy the rest of those chapters of that story. But just really a neat opportunity for me to really dig deep, self-reflection. And looking forward to sharing it. And what's next? What's next is get back on the honeydew list, make up for that, and spend time with some grandkids. And just, thank you so much. It's been a transformational year for me. And I hope I've carried the torch in a way that Capri has and all the Teachers of the Year in the past have, and then get Jeannie ready to roll. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's the highlight of every meeting to hear from you and those before you what you're learning, what you're seeing, what you're doing. I always like to say that y'all are the eyes and ears and the hands and feet of our board in sharing both the work that we're doing, but more importantly, the work that's going on out there that we get to see, because we can't be all over the state like apparently you are this year. So just truly thank you so much for what you've done here for us, but more importantly, back home and for kids across the state as well.
Can I say something? You know, Bo, we have to have meetings like this every now and then where it sucks really bad. And we deal with, the worst situations seem to come in front of us too often. But you are a fantastic example of the best in the profession. And it's an honor to have you, to have all the Teachers of the Year up here with us and remind us of just how good the cream of the crop really is in the state. You're really good.
Thank you very much.
The Queen, the Queen is lucky to have you. I have a feeling they won't have you too much longer. You got, you got big things in your future. And that's not to minimize the Queen. I love the Queen. But, but you've got, you've got great opportunities in your future. I look forward to what you do and watching you from here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
So I'll also add on to sentiments. You've been just a wonderful ambassador for this profession and for our state. And I know we all hold you in high regard, but so do all the students and families out there as well. One of the, I think, the greatest attributes about Bo is the word "no" is not in his vocabulary. And anytime we ask, and it could be at the last minute, it could be at midnight, you could say, Bo, I need you here at three o'clock in the morning, and he would be there. And he's that passionate about what he brings for our state. And as we kind of go forward and journey and welcome Ms. Wilcoxen, I hope you don't lose that phone number and not forget how to say no. But you will always do whatever we want. You will move anything out of the way. There's nothing we can't ask you to do that you say no to. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I have a few quick updates before we wrap up. The first update I'd like to provide is just kind of an annual overview of where we are with Arkansas Leadership Academy and highlight some of the things in the report. As we know, the greatest impact that we can have on improving student learning is as teachers like Bo standing in front of our students each and every single day. The second greatest impact is the leaders leaving our schools. So at this time, I'd like to ask Bradley Weber, I think he's going to come up and share a few highlights, who oversees the program.
Thank you for that. Secretary Oliva, Dr. Moore, thank you to the board. I just want to point out, Bo was a phenomenal Arkansas Leadership Academy presenter for us in ALA REACH. So Jeannie got big shoes to fill whenever it comes to sharing your tips and tricks with our Leadership Academy participants. Just a few quick updates about the Leadership Academy. I'll tell you first, to the secretary's point, we believe that every child in the state of Arkansas deserves to have an excellent education. We know that a lot of that comes to the teacher in the room and the person leading that building. And so the Arkansas Leadership Academy serves as the premier leadership hub for professional development, support, and equipping tools for Arkansas school leaders. A quick history, if you're not familiar with the program, it came about in nineteen ninety-one. So we've been around for a little bit, but the Master Principal Program that really worked to support lead principals was adopted in two thousand and three. And then the current partnership started in twenty twenty-one. And so it is a partnership on behalf of the Arkansas Department of Education and the State Board between the Arkansas Public School Resource Center, Arkansas State University, and EDUTAS, the outreach arm of the University of Oklahoma. We had a couple of points of emphasis, starting with that twenty twenty-one operation. The first was to expand access. Whenever we looked at prior years, we saw that there were some condensed pockets of participation. And we'll talk about that here in a second. But happy to say that as of today, every county in the state of Arkansas is representing in ALA work. Second was to expand transparency. It's why we get to give you updates each and every year. We're going to talk about three different program years. The one that concluded, you have the full annual evaluation from that year, year three, provided to you. But then also, we just wrapped up yesterday, year four programming, and we're getting ready for year five. The next is to expand participation. This year, we served four hundred and thirty participants in live face-to-face events, and then an additional four hundred in live and on-demand professional development online, which was double the participant count prior to that. And then to streamline personnel, we do that with three full-time employees, and then we beg, borrow, and steal another six people from our partner organizations who come alongside to help us provide that support. These are the programs that exist across the state. And all the ones around the outside happen face-to-face in cohort settings. To Bo's point earlier, those networks that you build, those relationships that you have with the people in the room are absolutely indispensable. And so everything from our Teacher Leader Program, that's a part of the DESI Career Continual, and allows for teacher leaders to go through and attain lead professional licensure on their teaching license, all the way through Master Principal and then Executive Leader, which works with building leaders and district leaders to build capacity. All those happen in face-to-face training. And then ALA REACH is our live and on-demand platform where we highlight high-level practices from Arkansas educators. Charmaine Evans runs that program and is in constant contact with educators across Arkansas, trying to find out where innovation is happening, where high student outcomes are happening, who's beating the odds. We rolled down that OEP list to find where are places where we're building leaders and Arkansas educators are doing things for students in a way that maybe we can replicate across the state. So in terms of participation, like I said, we just wrapped up year four yesterday. With that count, we served over eight hundred educators this year. The exciting part is whenever I sent data to Carly, we were at five hundred and sixty applications for our in-person programs for next year. As of this morning, sitting in row two, we're at six hundred and thirty-nine applications. That application's been open for a month and a half. And so just in terms of what we've been able to provide, we looked to eclipse that thousand mark next year whenever we think about who we get to serve online as well. The other part of that that I would point out is it's taken us a while to build that platform, right? To be able to crawl into each and every part of the state to say, hey, here's a free opportunity for you to come and learn how to be a high-quality leader, whether you're in a classroom role, an instructional leadership role, a building role, or a district role. So originally, whenever we wrote the RFP back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we projected that we might be able to convince roughly four hundred and fifty people to come on board. Now we've got over six hundred that we get to serve in those cohort settings and then an additional four hundred online. So whenever we think about that reach, we are at about seventy-eight percent of school districts and charter networks represented across all counties and co-op areas in the state of Arkansas. And this is the part that I'm really excited about, because when we came last year to do our annual report, Secretary Oliva said, hey, this is all great and all, but where's the data that says? Secretary Oliva said, "Hey, this is all great and all, but where's the data that says it's working?" And so we brought some friends with us this year. Natalie Dixon serves as a part of our third-party evaluator team. And so we challenged our evaluators with that dat- with that data track and said, "Hey, we wanna know. We wanna be able to show that the board's getting their money's worth when it comes to the Arkansas Leadership Academy." And so whenever they put, pinned to paper and went to do the calculation, our Phase Three graduating principals came in to our program at a seventy-nine point nine, which is right under the state average. Whenever it came to value-added growth scores for students, when they left us two years later, they were at an eighty-two point three two above that state average. Bradley, break that down. What does that really mean? It means they came in at the forty-sixth percentile, so just under state average, they left fifteen points higher at the sixty-third percentile, or the, yeah, the sixty-third percentile. And so whenever we talk about value-added growth, this is kind of our measure, I tell our principals all the time, "I don't really care about your achievement scores. I wanna know that you're growing kids." And so that's a part of their yearly application process, is here are the tools and resources that we've used to grow kids. And the fact that when superintendents ask me, "Why should I send a principal to work with you in the Leadership Academy?", I say, "Here's the data. Give me three years, and on average, we can grow a school by about fifteen percentile points." And they're like, "Done. Here, here you go." And they're quick to sign up. And so we were excited to see those numbers, and they reflect on the fact that I got to send out fifty-three new principal acceptances last week for next year's Phase One cohort. Whenever we talk about what does that turn into designation-wise, coming into this year, we had thirty-eight lead professional teachers and another hundred and fifty portfolios that are in process. People ask me, Bradley, why is there a big jump in that number? And that is because the timeline is getting real close to when you have to have that lead professional or master teacher designation in order to have a resident teacher with you or serve as a mentor. Over the last couple of years, we've been able to designate and bring five principals to you. We did two site visits this spring. They are in the process of being scored. I hope to bring those two people to you very, very soon with additional three scheduled site visits for this fall and an additional eleven principals that had eligible growth scores for, for Master Principal designation. The other thing that we always talk about is those different corners of the state that operate differently, and so we've included in there for you two kind of case studies that represent each side of the state. Justin Wancher up in Gentry and then Raphael Smith, who's over at Stewart Elementary in Forest City. And really the way that they were able to impact students whenever it came to free and reduced lunch outcomes. We asked them, starting in Phase One, to commit to an action research project that they're gonna do and track the impacts of their work and their leadership in their building. And both of those gentlemen committed to tracking free and reduced lunch outcomes. And over the course of their time in the program compared to what was happening prior in their buildings, we saw math growth jump at Gentry High School by nine point one five points, ALA growth jumped by three point eight. And then Forest City with Rafa, math growth up by almost twelve points and ALA growth up by almost nine points. I always just like to throw this in there, because everybody likes to talk about money. Ten percent of your recognition rewards funding went to ALA-led schools. So just about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars went to schools led by ALA participants last year. We also do, and tasked Natalie and her team with some qualitative findings. And so one of the questions that we always ask is how their instructional leadership has improved over their time with us in the program. And proud to report that across all of our cohort groups that meet face-to-face, all of those came back at a nine-year above. That's still not satisfactory for us. You can see there are additions up there. Teacher leader was up twelve percent, Master Principal up five percent, Instructional Leader up four percent over the prior year. We still wanna close those gaps between ninety-one and a hundred, right? I don't have a Building 101 from Taipei, but we're trying to get there. If we can put, if we can put an antenna on these numbers, we're gonna try to. We also wanna know about district perception, and so we ask district-level leaders, "What's your perception of people who are participating in Arkansas Leadership Academy programs, and has it improved your district's performance?" And again, across the board, ninety-four is above whenever it comes to district perception and districts willing to send participants to Arkansas Leadership Academy programming. One of the pieces that I'm most proud of is our funding from the state grant is one point four million dollars a year. And we're able to pull off those results with a little bit left over at the end of the year, because you're only paying for three full-time employees. We're begging, borrowing, stealing everybody else. But really, it is that partnership that helps us do the work. Whenever we're going out and partnering with schools and some of our business and community partners to make that work. You can see in terms of the spending that we do have up there, the biggest part of that is consultants, coachings, and stipends. And really what that is, is our principals who have been through Master Principal, our leaders who are, or our teacher leaders who are designated lead professionals. Those kinds of people come back and serve as coaches for us, they serve as mentors for us, they host site visits for us, so that those current-year participants can go beyond those sites where those high-leverage practices are happening. And so we do provide them a coaching stipend to come back and mentor other people. They stay on a five-year roster for us, so once you graduate with us, you have five years of service to come back and coach, mentor, and provide support to the upcoming participants. We've already begun the work. We know that the department has been hard at work in terms of making some recommendations around that Day One survey report and new leadership components. And so our team's already at work in terms of aligning and making sure that we continue to carry out the work of the department whenever it comes to making those new competencies a part of ALA infrastructure. And then I won't read these all to you, but our third-party evaluator also continues to provide recommendations based on their data gathering and their qualitative research, and so our responses to those are outlined for you as well. The biggest one that I would tell you is that each year, we continue to be asked, "Hey, I've got five teachers who need to come to Teacher Leader, but I'd love to send three more." This year, for the third year in a row, we will offer an additional cohort. We've grown that program each year. We're already up to two hundred and eighty people, which I would love to accept all of them, but I need a bigger location. And so that's the email I got to send earlier this week, is, "Yes, you're in. I don't know where we're going to meet yet, because we need a bigger space in order to accommodate everybody." And so it's great to be able to send that information out, especially whenever I think back to when we started four years ago, calling districts and saying, "Hey, wouldn't you love an opportunity for your teachers to participate?" And now those coming out of the woodwork. And so I wanna say a big thank you. Secretary Oliva wandered into one of our Master Principal sessions. He didn't know he was gonna end up on the agenda, but he ended up on the agenda anyway. Trons has been on a school site visit. Like I said, we've had ALA presentations from other folks. And so an open invitation for you as board members to come and either participate in our sessions or to be a guest speaker, a guest presenter, to lean on the leadership work and the advocacy work that you've done, the way that it impacts school communities, talk about the role of early childhood in building strong foundations. That's the coolest part about being in the room, is every part of the state's represented and every grade band is represented as well. And so on behalf of myself, our team, I've got Gina Williams, who's in our instructional leader program, Natalie from our evaluation team, Scott Smith, I'm the executive director at APSRC. They've been tremendous supports in making the work happen. And so I wanna tell them thank you publicly in front of you and just tell you that we know the hard work of leading schools is never easy, but the best part of the work that we get to do is in building capacity, right? Making sure that we translate not siloed leadership, but collective leadership. And so that ability to take risks, innovate, and do new things, we believe, is what's getting the academic results that we are. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Board members, questions?
Thank you.
I think, oh, no, I was just like, so I think Kathy and I, when, when did the RFP go through that the State Board approved to change the provider for the?
So we just wrapped up year four service, so it was delivered in twenty twenty, and then operation began in twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, and was it a fi- a five-year cycle?
Yeah, so it's a five-year cycle, and so it's that one point four million dollar allocation for five years. And so we're heading into year five of that, and then we'll be back to request some continued support to grow the work and provide high-level leadership to Arkansas educators.
Okay, I think Ms. Woods, you might have been in part of that process then. Okay, yeah, because that was at the time a really big shift going from a longtime provider and thinking through what would be next. And so it's been neat to watch how y'all have put your own stamp on what it should look like. But as we all know, the importance of leaders and how vital it is. I was glad to see you have an East Arkansas principal in the thing, and I'm always advocating for our part of the state that we need strong leaders and any support that you all and others can give them.
The best phone call I had last week was with Wes Smith, who's gonna send their Assistant Principal contingency to Instructional Leader next year to get some horizontal alignment across that group, but also to support the work that's happening there vertically. So those are kind of phone calls that I get really excited about. I tell people all the time I have more fun than I should at my job.
That's great. Well, thank you for coming in today and presenting.
And thank you, Bradley, and I saw that Scott Smith snuck in the back, so we appreciate him. And both of you always having an open ear and willingness to kind of grow programs and make sure we're doing what's best for students across the state. So we appreciate both of you. One, a couple more things I wanna do an update on. I'm gonna ask Stacy to do about a two-minute update on where we are with Bliville School District. If you remember, we had a board meeting in the Bliville School Community about two weeks ago and moved them from, I think it was Level Four to Level Five, intensive support. So there's been boots on the ground for the last two weeks, and I think it's important for this board to be informed of kind of some of the key decisions that have been made moving forward, or updated at least.
And I can go longer than two minutes, because I snuck out and ate some cantaloupe. No, I'm gonna be quick. Yeah, we've had boots on the ground this, the last two weeks. Sheila Whitlow and her team have been there nonstop around the hour. I mean, they're living there right now, doing the work. Yesterday, we announced a new interim superintendent for the transition time. That's Dr. Brent Miller. He works for Sheila. He's on our team. He's been in Bliville this whole last year. So we released an intent for, for folks to notify us that they had an intent to apply for a transformation contract. We released that the Friday after our board meeting in Bliville. We had eight different providers submit an intent to apply. We've released to them the, everything in the proposal that they need to return to us that is due Monday, the sixteenth. All right, so it's quick, but those that are, that are in this world, they've been watching and are aware, and they're eager. So...
And they're from in-state and out-of-state.
Yeah, we have in-state and we have out-of-state proposals that are being put together. So next week, we'll review those, score those by rubric. We plan on doing similar to what we did in Marble Lane, where we pulled community people to be a part of the review process and interviewing, and then that recommendation of a transformation contract would come back to this board in the end, because they are in Level Five support. Some of the big pieces that Sheila and her team, while they've been in Bliville, they are going through all vendor contracts currently. We've actually went ahead and terminated some of the contracts. For example, there was a janitorial contract that was almost eight hundred thousand dollars. If you remember in my report, we were talking about per-student cost. That was one area that was really, really large. We have terminated that contract. We felt like there were some problems there.
And they weren't, and they weren't cleaning schools. Let's forget about the fact of how much the contract was. Number one complaint we heard from teachers and faculty is that the schools...
Our buildings are not clean.
The buildings were not clean.
So Sheila's been having those conversations. We've got people working there, going through their employee contracts, working, using. There was a very unclear salary schedule in the hearing. We talked about stipends being stacked. They were, and they were done in ways that made no sense and unilaterally at times. And at times, we can't even show that there was board approval of those. So we have redone the salary schedule. We are rewriting job descriptions. And we're, Sheila and her team are having one-to-one conversations with people about what their job is, about the expectation, and about where the salary pieces are going to be. So all of that'll go through our board process with Secretary Oliva, and we'll get all those structures in place. So our plan is to be able to hand off, when we have a transformational contract, that we'll create a transition plan with whoever in the end wins the bid, okay? Whether that is fast and they can do it come August, or whether that's, they can do it come January, or what does that look like, right? That'll be something that's negotiated out. Sheila's team is down there setting expectations, putting in standard operating procedures. There were none. Going through every board packet, looking for items that have been approved or not approved. But the big thing, and I just said that, is the one-to-one communication. Even just in terms of us announcing who the interim superintendent is, we've been able to communicate that with the community. We were able to email parents. We were able to email the staff. Secretary Oliva and I traveled to Bliville last week and met with different groups of individuals in the school district. Mr. Henderson has been involved in those meetings. He's also met with Ms. Whitlow. Our goal is to bring in the community to this. This is an opportunity to transform not only the school, but this community. And when we get the school right, it will have a positive impact on the community. So lots of great work. If the OCSs team is watching, keep working hard, guys. We got, we got lots of work to do, but we appreciate what they do. So thank you. I'll take any questions if you have any.
I was wondering if, when we were there, I was approached by an employee that said, "Are we gonna have contracts? We don't have contracts." And I said, "I can't answer that, but I know number one concern is the students." And at that point, there were no students registered for the next year. Have they, have...
So they're, they're, they're working on all of that right now. Contracts they've taken care of with teachers. They've had, Melissa's team has been in there four different times this past year. I think we have everybody on a licensure pathway at this point. We've had to negotiate some contract terms with outside groups coming in for like cafeteria or maintenance or custodial work with outside groups that we're working on. So we're tightening all those pieces up.
That's great.
I tell you one thing I think that is encouraging, and Ms. Smith talked a little bit about, we were able to go back, and there's been people there every day. We actually went back and met with everybody. We met with every employee that was still working. And I'm really excited for the three principals that have been designated to lead the three different schools, elementary, middle, high school campus, and some of them are gonna be brand-new. But they're, they're in it for the right reasons. They are gonna put students first, and they're gonna be wonderful partners throughout this transition. So there's a, there's a nice horizon in the future for Bliville. I feel very good about that.
Yeah, yeah. I would one-hundred percent agree.
Board members, any additional questions or comments?
Last thing I wanna do is, it's kind of the ending of a tenure, like we talked about Bo being his last meeting, but we also took two wonderful board members who it's their last meeting. And it's hard to believe that your seven-year journey, when you sign up for that, actually has an end day in it. So we wanna take a minute and thank you for years of service and the impact you've had across the state of Arkansas for improving student learning. And we'll start by showing a little video here, if you can indulge me.
We're super, super thrilled. Mrs. McFuttrich and Dr. Moore were just sworn in over at the State Supreme Court by Justice Nguyen, and we are really thrilled that they are here. We hope you like this room. You're gonna be here a lot over the next seven years.
I'll make a motion to approve pending Governor's Office approval.
I'll make a motion to approve pending governor's office approval.
Order. Um, it's been a great morning so far for us. We got to visit the, um, Arkansas State Child Development Center.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December State Board of Education meeting.
Do you have a second? We have lots of seconds, so I think it might be a unan- unanimous vote here in a minute, but we have.
Ms. McFetridge, Dr. Moore.
So I know I've only been on the tail end of your tenure, but sincerely true of the, to the most special people that I've ever worked with in over twenty-five years of education. And, um, you've embraced me and, and pushed me and challenged it and made me better. And, um, I will always appreciate you for that. And, um, just like I told Bo that he can't change his phone number, I've already have mental assignments of your next two big projects. So this will not be the last time that we speak.
So we wanted to just honor you guys for your time, and so you're gonna get this, this clock. But Bo, for, for Teacher of the Year again, your enthusiasm, um, I just appreciate how you jumped into the role and you embrace this opportunity and you didn't miss out on anything, right? Even, even challenging yourself to jump into the leadership cohort that you're in right now. That again, just shows your extra mile.
Thank you.
So appreciate that. Sarah, I remember the room, third floor on B-side, um, two thousand fourteen. I'm new to the department. You come walking in as a governor's liaison. Um, it's been a, yeah, yeah. So we started here together, and so just watching you grow, asking tough questions, holding us accountable, pushing us to continue. Appreciate that and always learning from you. And Ms. Rollins, I can, the word that comes to mind when I think of you is just class. You're just classy. Um, you're what we aspire as women to be in a, a field of, of folks that are in, like, competitive jobs and having to make tough decisions and having to deliver messages. I, I think when I was yelling red flag in Blyeville, I wasn't classy. I've never seen you not be. And so that's just what comes to mind when I think about you and how you handle tough situations. And when things are just really going, you just always hold that bar for us. So I, I want to thank you personally just for being that kind of example for me. So thank you. So thank you for your time.
Had you not stepped up in Blyeville, I would have not been classy.
Don't stand up next to him. I want to see that.
That's beautiful.
Get a copy of that song.
Well, I, I, I just wanted to say to Kathy, it has been such a joy to get to know you and work with you these years. You're amazing. I, I don't want to say this because of ageism, but you have been on a board, a school board, almost my entire life. And you know, and I, I think sometimes I wish I had this job later in life so I could be you and have that wisdom and perspective. But the impact that you had on Springdale, the impact that you've had now on the state, and the wisdom that you brought from all your time and your work in Springdale to here is just immeasurable. Um, I truly, truly have, so appreciate you and our time that we got to be together during these seven years. It's amazing.
And I admire you so much and your depth of knowledge. And you're able to ask those tough questions, those really hard questions. And I'm sitting here thinking, no, why didn't I think about that?
You are too. I say the same thing about you, so.
But it's, I've learned a lot from you as well.
It's been amazing.
It's been, it, you know, it's been a volunteer career for me. If I can say, I started when my son was in first grade in nineteen eighty-three. I was elected to the school board in nineteen ninety-one. And never did I think I could be a home room mother, let alone a PTA president, a state PTA president, a, uh, president of the ASBA board, and, and then get appointed to the State Board of Education. I mean, never in my wildest dreams did I ever think that this would be a path for me. And yet I always wanted to be a teacher, so I got to be part of the education system for a long time. And truly an honor for me, truly, something that'll carry me for the rest of my life, so.
I'll say, you know, ap- appointments that a governor makes, probably they're, they're sticking their neck out there every now and then, and they, they wonder, what is this person gonna do? And this person is gonna last longer than my term in the governorship. Um, I can only imagine that the two of you have made Governor Hutchinson proud for the way you have carried yourself on this board and, um, represented Arkansas, regular Arkansans, but most importantly, students. The, the student focus that y'all have helped bring to this board has been tremendous. And you both lead, I, I told you privately, you both leave enormous shoes, and, uh, there will be a hole here. We will do our best and we will, we will carry on, but we will miss y'all tremendously and the leadership that y'all have provided us.
Well, I want to challenge Sarah. She is, I'm gonna be really interested to see what you do. And I really challenge you to continue on and do great things.
Me too. Well, my focus this summer is helping my first grader read. But I think back when I got appointed, looking at pictures, he was three months old. And not the work of so many individuals in this department and statewide that school looks different for my first grader right now than it would have seven years ago because of so much hard work here and, and across the state. And I am, the, the, you know, the best part of this job are the people and the people we've met, we've been with up here and the people in the agency and the people across the state, um, that work so hard to see success for students.
It's hard to follow, uh, those comments. Uh, you know, I've, I've been with you two, uh, I don't want to say a really long time, but it seemed like it just lasted a few seconds. And, uh, I've learned a lot from the both of you, and I'm really gonna, going to miss you. And, um, I gotta figure out who's gonna ask some of those very tough questions. But, uh, wish both of you, um, much love on your new journey and your new beginning, because I don't believe in endings. I believe in beginnings.
I'll make a final comment. Um, I feel like it's the end of an era because y'all are the last two that, or here when I joined the board. And so after y'all leave, like during COVID. Um, and so it has been my greatest honor to get to serve with the two of you. So Jeff's right, there's gonna be huge shoes to fill, and I don't presume to, that I will ever be able to remotely fill those shoes, Sarah. So, thank you for leading as well.
I remember watching Sarah walk through the halls of the legislature and, uh, never really had any personal interaction with her until we got on the board here. And, uh, just both of you have just felt, felt, you know, so privileged to, to serve with you and just sit and observe. You know, we learn a lot by just sitting and watching, and, and I appreciate what you've contributed, both of you.
Not under my. Yeah, okay, I'll do that. Okay. I, yeah, I, I just don't have words. Um, you ladies have been incredible inspiration to me. You have set the bar so high. Um, we'll do our best to meet it. Um, but I th- I think, you know, words just can't express, but so I'll just say thank you. Thank you.
So, um, I suspect that you two will continue to track, um, our work and what we're doing, which is really exciting because, um, now I can call you and talk action items. When I was going over the agenda, I'd often think, ooh, I wonder what Kathy's reaction would be, or, ooh, I wonder what Sarah's questions. I wonder if Sarah would ask this, you know? And now I can just go, hey, what do you think? So, um, I appreciate your dedication and your hard work, and it's remarkable because the two of you bring, um, a level of patience and grace to this role that, um, I don't think, uh, can be matched. So we'll miss you dearly. Thank you both, and you'll hear from me.
As I mentioned earlier, I've only been on the board for seven months, and I wish I had known you for seven years, truly. And, uh, that's why I wanted you to be members of the pencil club, as we christened it this morning. And then finally, you know, they say finish strong. My goodness, I've never seen a person ask so many questions in their final meeting. As if it was their, you know, in the middle of their third year. Um, so you're full on, and Kathy accepting the baton to take on Blyeville and the issues there. And you're next to the last meeting. I mean, that's the pedal to the metal. And so thank you for showing us how to go all the way and finish strong.
Well, I think we're leaving a tremendous board, and I admire all of you so much. I think this is a, this really strong board, and, uh, I think all of you should be commended for your work and the questions that you ask. And I've been very proud to s- to, um, to work with all of you, so.
And the high standards that y'all are setting to, um, reach to students across and teachers across the state.
So as we adjourn, can we get one final photo with everybody?
Yes. All good.
I'm gonna just have one more ask so that we can memorialize this moment. You can bring your little clocks with you. Good. One more photo now. Yeah.